Ladies and gentlemen, the cameras are on, the microphones are rolling. A good evening and welcome to the day after Swedish Days 2022 for tonight's special council meeting and committee of the whole meeting. We will begin the special council meeting by asking our deputy clerk to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Here.
Burkhart?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Cavan?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Kosarag?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
A full house. Robert, would you do us the honors of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda, folks, is item 2A, Consider Approval of Ordinance Number 2022-28, Amending Title IV Business and License Regulations, Chapter II Liquor Control, Section 4-2-13, Adding One Class C3 Liquor License for Chai Cootery, excuse me, Chai Cootery Boards and More LLC Located at 321 Franklin Street. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bruno, second by Mr. Swanson. Stephanie?
Sure. So the agenda item pretty much says it all. There's an application for a Class C3 liquor license, which is retail sale for consumption on or off premise that has been submitted by Chai Cootery Boards and More LLC. The police department has completed all necessary investigations, and the liquor commissioner recommends approval as presented, and I believe we have the applicant present this evening if you have any additional questions.
Welcome, Robert. It's a good thing that background check went through, man. That's an inside joke, by the way. Any questions or comments from the dais for our guests? Oh, forgive me. Mr. Bruno, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if the applicant can join us at the lectern and tell us a bit about the business.
Sir?
Thanks for having me tonight. As I said, my name is Robert Parker. Chai Cootery is actually my wife's vision and her dream. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to join us here tonight. Her mother had to have a little surgery today, so she wasn't able to make it. But she was originally the sales director for Oberweis Home Delivery for several years, and during the COVID shutdown and lockdowns and all, she had decided that she wanted to go out and do something on her own. She'd always had a dream to do it, and she'd kind of been involved in charcuterie for a while, and so it was her opportunity. So she said, "What do you think?" And I supported her wholeheartedly, so we took a big step. And she originally started kind of doing it from home as kind of a side business, and then it grew, and we moved into a shared kitchen, a commercial kitchen up on Stevens Street, and it kept growing from there. And she wanted to add retail and be able to do some other things, and so we started looking for a retail space. It took quite a while to find the right space. We had some kind of unique requirements as far as kitchen space goes and things like that. So we finally, just she kind of, as a really unusual coincidence, was out walking one day and ran into the owner of 321 Franklin Street on the side of the street, kind of struck up a conversation, and he said, "Well, it just so happens it's available, would you be interested in renting it?" And she said, "Oh, well, absolutely." So that's kind of how we ended up where we are. Started in there in January, did a good bit of work in there, just freshening things up, and we opened about just over three weeks ago, June the 1st, and everything's been great so far. We've had a really great start.
And that does a mighty fire with Swedish Day.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, I did stop in there. We got a, it was a wonderful charcuterie kit that we purchased, and I inquired about when you'd get a liquor license, and here we are.
And here we are. That's been on the agenda since day one, so we're anxious to get that going.
Welcome to Geneva. It's a nice shop.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Ms. Ruby?
Thank you. I just want to say I love the name.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. It pains me, but I have to give credit to my brother-in-law for that. He's in marketing in the city, and it was kind of his idea, so.
Yeah, it's great.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Anyone else? We have a motion by Bruno, a second by Swanson, to approve item 12A, which is, of course, the C3 liquor license for Chai Cootery Boards and More LLC. A voice vote is sufficient. All in favor of approving this request, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Nice meeting you, Robert.
Nice meeting you.
Say hi to Michelle.
I will certainly do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mayor. Voice vote's okay on that?
A voice vote is sufficient.
Is it okay? I thought city council would need, okay. Just want to make sure they got their license.
You'll go in there tomorrow, Mayor. Order something. Item B, folks, Consider Approval of Ordinance Number 2022-29, Amending Title IV Business and License Regulations, Chapter II Liquor Control, and Chapter VI Food and Food Establishments. Article A Sidewalk Cafes of the City of Geneva Code. Is there a motion to bring this matter to the floor? Mr. Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cavan. Stephanie?
I really don't have much to add. We talked about this a couple times already, so this is just the fruition of those conversations, but essentially it's updating the code to allow sidewalk cafes with the serving of alcoholic liquor on public property.
And of course, we have Director Timoshenko with us this evening as well. If there's any questions for either her or our city administrator, the floor is open. Seeing none? Sensing none? Because we are using public property, we will ask for a roll call vote. Deputy clerk, whenever you're ready.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of 10 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 absent, item 2B has been approved. Item 2C, Consider Approval of Resolution Number 2022-54, Authorizing Execution of a License Agreement with the Little Traveler at 404 South Third Street to Remove Time Restrictions for Certain On-Street Parking Spaces. Is there a motion? Mr. Swanson makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Burkhart. Anything to add to this, Ms. Dawkins?
No. Similar to the last item, this has been discussed a couple of times, but it is a license agreement to remove the time restrictions for a fee for the Little Traveler.
Questions or comments from the dais for either Ms. Timoshenko or Ms. Dawkins? Seeing none and sensing none, this again would require a roll call vote since we are utilizing city services and public rights of way. Ms. Dawkins is to my left. You are Ms. Fornari. Please take your role whenever, whatever your name is.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of 10 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 absent, item 2C has been approved. We're at the public comment and new business stage of the agenda. I don't think there's anyone online.
There are people online, but no commentary.
No commentary? Okay. From the dais, any new business or? Yes, Ms. Ruby?
Thank you. I just wanted to state appreciation and thanks for all the support, in particular the volunteers that worked Swedish Days, the Geneva, the EMA, the Emergency Management Team. Those volunteers, I had the opportunity to talk with one of them yesterday and learned that many of those volunteers have been on board for, you know, 30-plus years, and, you know, they do it because they love their community, and I could not be more grateful, and I just really want to recognize and thank that entire team for their efforts and their contributions to our city in helping it make Geneva the great town that it is.
Well said.
Thank you.
Well said. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Burkhart?
Yeah, same what Becky said, just thank the Chamber for its leadership of Swedish Days. People were so excited, you know, we had people over to watch the parade, and every group said, "It's so great to be back, you know, three years since the last parade," and I just think there was so much excitement, and we got pretty good weather, and yeah, it was just fun to feel like a normal Swedish Days celebration again. So great work by the Chamber and all the volunteers and all the nonprofits with their food booths and everything that make it happen, so.
How late did the party go at the Burkhart House?
I took a nap at like 5:00 p.m., so not so light. Some, all our neighbors have all these people out on the lawn, and I'm like, "Do we do something wrong that like everybody leaves as soon as it's over?"
I heard sirens at 11 o'clock. I figured.
That was me putting my trash in the, trash on the corner.
There you go.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Cavan, excuse me, sir.
Thank you. I echo what's already been said, but I think it was just, it was really fantastic this year, even just walking in the parade, seeing how many people were all over along the route and how many people came down there. I was in the downtown area on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and just thanking all the residents or visitors that came. I think it looked like all of the businesses were doing very well, and I think it was very well received, so I was just very pleased to see the, very pleased to see the turnout and the overall, how everything worked. I thought it was great. Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, anything else? We're at the moment, dramatic as it is, to entertain a motion to adjourn the special city council meeting. Motion by Kosarag, who just returned from Hawaii. All in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. We'll take just a moment to transition to the special committee of the whole meeting, policy discussion. Ladies and gentlemen, without objection, we'll begin our special committee of the whole meeting on a couple policy discussions. This meeting is formally called to order. Let the record show that all the council members are present. Our first item to discuss is to, actually consider, is to approve the special committee of the hold minutes from June 13, 2022. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Bruno.
Second.
Seconded by Mayor. All in favor of approving the minutes from June 13, 2022, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Approved. Items of business, folks. Item 3A, Policy Discussion on Fence Regulations. We have our esteemed Director of Community Development, Mr. DeGroot, with us tonight. The floor is here, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'm feeling a little awkward. I'm not used to such an empty room at a meeting night.
You had birthday parties as a kid, didn't you?
Uh.
Oh, come on.
It was a good one. It was a good one. All right.
Oh, so.
Yeah, I think so.
Thanks for focusing.
Okay, so this, this, this discussion is going to focus on a lot of different aspects of our fence regulations, but primarily it'll focus on the appropriate height of fences in different yards. We had a similar conversation in 2014, so if you were here then, you might recognize some of the slides, but I've tried to rework some of it. The topics we would like to get some feedback on include the allowable height of fences in the street yard, whether or not the height should be regulated differently in corner lots than on interior lots. We would also like feedback on our fence requirements surrounding swimming pools, and then finally, your input on how fences should be regulated on the rear yard of through lots, and I'll provide a little more information on each of these as we go forth and pause for some discussion on each one. Just briefly, our current fence regulations restrict the height of fences in the street yard to 42 inches. As shown in this graphic, the street yard is anything that's forward of the house, and on a corner lot, a corner lot would have two street yards. Fences can otherwise be six feet tall on the side and rear yards of residential properties, and then, as noted here, the swimming pool and spa code requires a fence of at least four feet tall around all swimming pools, and we'll touch a little bit more on that later in the presentation. But what are some of the reasons people want fences in the street yard? It can vary. It can just be aesthetics, decorative. It can increase the utility of a yard, provide security, provide some privacy. On the left here, you'll see a good example of just kind of increasing the utility of a yard, fencing it all the way to the property line. If that fence was pulled back out of the street yard, you need to have a much less usable space. On the right, I don't know if you can see the dog in there, but it's an example of providing some security for your pets or children. We also have examples of fences in the street yard that have been used for privacy. These obviously don't comply with the 42-inch height requirement, but they're good examples of how fences have been used to provide privacy from the public street. So those are some of the reasons people want to have a fence in the street yard, but what are some of the reasons we have concerns with fences in the street yard? Again, it comes down to aesthetics. It can be viewed as a disruption of the public realm, kind of walling off of the community. Not all fences are maintained equally, so you have some issues with paint or stain. We've heard over the years that the 42-inch height is kind of a unique height and not readily available at all retailers, and then sometimes they cost more. And then we have the conflict with our code where it requires a 48-inch fence around pools, but it's only allowed to be 42 inches in the street yard. So these are just some examples, kind of the fences right on top of the public sidewalk can be disruptive for some, not keeping the open space in the public right-of-way or next to the public right-of-way. Maintenance, the fence on the right probably hadn't been painted or stained in a few years. We did look at common retailers, and there are definitely more options at either a standard 36 inches or 48 inches, but there still are options at 42 inches in a variety of styles and colors, but there definitely are many more at the standard three and four-foot heights. Generally, too, the cost is not more expensive at 42 inches because it's less material, but in some cases, we did notice a price increase for that height. So one of the issues we routinely run into is that the swimming pool and spa code requires the swimming pool to be surrounded by a four-foot-tall fence, and that can be difficult on a corner lot without really disrupting the usable area of the backyard. The picture on the right is an example of a fence that was installed, it was granted a variation, on a corner lot to surround a swimming pool. And this slide probably illustrates it a little bit better. If you can see, the blue and green lines are all located in the side and rear yard, so fences in those locations can be up to six feet tall, and they would meet the requirements of the code. But any fence forward of the green line would be in the street yard and would have to drop down to 42 inches. So you can see that if you had to place a fence along the green line to enclose the pool area, you'd be really reducing that kind of usable area of the backyard, and that's where we commonly see either some pushback or the request for a variation. I think when this was brought up a little over a month ago, there's a question about how many variations have we granted related to this? When it comes to the swimming pool and spa code requirements, we've really only granted four variations, but I can attest that we've come across that much more often and maybe had more applicants kind of begrudgingly comply with the code instead of go forward with the cost and time it takes for a variation. Before I pause for some discussion, I just want to get through a few more slides. These are just provided to show kind of the difference, the visual differences between a 42 and 46, or sorry, 48-inch fence and kind of the opacity, too, how open the fence This one, you've got kind of a similar style fence. Both have some openness to it, but 42 and 48 inches, there's kind of a noticeable difference This last slide, before moving on to some discussion, we reviewed the same communities that we reviewed in 2014, and there have been some changes which appear to address some of the issues that we've been discussing. St. Charles increased from 42 inches to 48 inches in both the front and corner street yards, so in all street yards, it's allowed to be 48 inches. Batavia increased from 36 to 48 inches in the corner street yard, so kind of in the front yard portion of a corner lot, it's allowed to be three feet, but once you get to the side, it can go up to four feet. Naperville allows up to 48 inches in the street yard if at least 30% of the fence is open. They also allow a fence up to six feet tall in the corner street yard, provided that that yard kind of abuts another rear yard. If it abuts a front yard, it has to comply with the street yard requirements. West Chicago also now allows up to six feet in the corner street yard. Then Glen Island and Lombard made some clarifications regarding through lots, which we'll touch on in a little bit.
Before you watch the series, what about provided?
So on a corner lot, you could have a similar relationship where the rear yard backs up to a rear yard, or sometimes the rear yard will abut the front yard of the lot on the other street, and in that case, they would only allow it to be the four feet, not six feet.
Guys, what's the rule?
It's later in the presentation. Okay. I've got an illustration.
Before you did, you went past it, and I wasn't.
No.
No, pretty much.
Touch on that in a minute. So I kind of want to just pause there and talk about the, I guess, the height in the street yard is 42 inches in the street yard overly restrictive? Is that something we should consider increasing to a more standard height of 48 inches? Is that something we only want to consider on corner lots? Do those present kind of a unique condition where they have a rear yard that's more exposed to the public realm? Or is it just an exception we want to make when there's a swimming pool present on a corner lot to remove that conflict in our codes? Obviously, if we went to 48 inches, we wouldn't have to make that exception. It'd be across the board. I'll stop talking and just kind of pause there for some initial feedback on what we feel the appropriate heights are.
Just a courtesy note, we have several people tuning in remotely who I believe are joining us on this issue alone, so just reminder to use the microphones and.
Yeah, we've had several inquiries this summer that have kind of the impetus for this discussion, yes.
The floor is open, folks. Mr. Cavan, and then we're going to head over to Mr. Bruno and then Mr. Swanson.
I don't have a problem with it being increased to 48 inches. I know that there's been some different discussion about how much you could still see through there and everything, but then I also don't know, depending upon what type, as far as like for the pool regulations, how much there can be to see through when a pool comes into play. I don't, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but based off of a lot of the information that we talked about a month ago, and a lot of the different people that have reached out, as well as the information that you've already provided, I know that you have more, I don't think that I have an issue with it being increased to 48 inches, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bruno, then Mr. Swanson.
Well, anyone that's known me long enough knows that I have a strong stance on street yard fences generally, so I'm not inclined to generally just raise that height for any street yard fence. If I had my druthers, if you couldn't step over it, there shouldn't be a fence in the front yard. I think it really disrupts the community, blocks things off. In terms of the pools, the, does the law require, when there's an attractive hazard like a pool, is there a requirement for any certain opacity or can a fully open fence?
It's more of a maximum spacing between the vertical members and the horizontal members, so you can't, you can't see through it, yes.
Oh, you can't see through it. So having said that, on my general dislike of front yard fences, obviously I wouldn't want to increase it, and honestly, I don't really have any motive from an environmental perspective to accommodate swimming pools. I mean, it's used a lot of natural resources and energy to maintain them, and I don't know that we, I'm not inclined to change our codes to accommodate that. That's it.
Mr. Swanson, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you go back in the presentation to a slide that showed the concerns of the front I believe one was the public, we went back already.
I went too far.
That one right there. So can you explain to me how a 42-inch fence addresses the concerns better than a 48-inch The six-inch difference, what is, what are we accomplishing by making it that number?
I think it's just that difference. I mean, there's that, there's that six-inch difference between the 42-inch and the 48-inch fence that has a different impact on how it's perceived.
Okay, so it's just the visual feeling?
The visual impact, right.
Okay. And I guess based on that, I agree with Alderman Cavan. I think the 48-inch, relaxing that to 48 inches makes sense. It offers the residents more choices and certainly better economic choices, so I would support changing that for the, for the front. Thank you.
Mr. Maladra, then Ms. Mayor, then Mr. Marx.
I think my concern has always been something that's not shown in any of David's pictures, and that's a situation where the fence borders another person's front yard, so if you can go to the blue and green and red lines.
Trying to remember where that was now? There you go.
So basically, I'm talking about somebody who is at the top of the page, not pictured on the other side of that fence. I think that, I think that people, anybody in any lot, anywhere, has a reasonable expectation that they might look out their backyard or back window and see a fence or a wall or something like that, but I don't know how many people have that expectation to have their view impeded by a solid structure from their living room or their front yard. The difference between 42 and 48 inches, I don't know. I would say the difference between Michael Jordan and Patrick Ewing. You know, when you see them, one's a lot bigger than the other one. It's only six inches, but it's a difference between a garden and a center. It's fairly substantial in certain constructs, and I think that construct, for me, ends up being the front yard. And I'm speaking the same thing I reacted to in 2014. There is one situation I'm aware of where that happened, and I know that the person in the house next door, who all of a sudden had the view of his front yard changed, I mean, it changed the entire streetscape of the block, but it most impacted the person next door and the person across the street. So I also am not inclined to increase it unless we can find a way to protect that situation where it abuts a front yard.
Ms. Mayor, then Mr. Marx.
I guess I wasn't really fully understanding this issue before, and now that I realize that it's for fences that are within the setback, which we have setbacks to kind of limit people building into the public, what we consider to be view area, and it does make for a nicer, organized street view to not have a bunch of fences and breaking up that, that front yard view of a community. So I definitely don't support going above 42 inches in the front yard or the street yard, and I think that if it is to go to 48 in a, in a fence that's constructed into the setback on the side yard, like the green line, we can't really govern that. That's, that's within their buildable area, but we have setbacks for a reason, and this is a good example of that. I would go along with, I think Naperville had 48 inches if 30% open. I think that that changes the, it changes the dynamic of that six-inch difference enough that it makes sense to me to do that. So I would go with no change to the front yard or the street yard, limitation of 42, I don't know how they arrived at thirty percent, but I'll trust that they did some homework on that.
And if that's the direction we receive, then we'll certainly do some homework on that, too.
Okay.
Mr. Merks, then Mr. Kocelak.
You know, Amy, you pretty much said what I was going to. That's the way I am leaning also. I liked what Naperville did, and I think it does ruin the streetscape when you have too big of a fence in the front yard. So I'm leaning the way Alderman Mayor was with what she had said. So that's how I would like to see it go.
Mr. Kocelak, sir.
I think we're talking about the aesthetics of Geneva, and I have a feeling that's where the forty-two inches came from. And I guess I I kind of support that, too. I put up a forty-two inch fence on a side yard a few years back, and I literally didn't even know that there was a problem with availability versus forty-eight fences. My fence contractor never balked or never said anything to me at all. I know some real estate agents, including the one that wrote All of Us, you know, might have some concerns about that, but I'm glad and I appreciate what you did for the research with the availability, with the, you know, different big box companies and peerless fence, and not seeing that there really is that major difference in cost or availability. I mean, maybe we're in COVID, and that's affected it a little bit with the supply chain problems, but in the long run, if it was like it was for me five, six years ago, then I'm not seeing it. So I guess I'm I'm tempted to leave it like it is, too. I would like to resolve the issue, though, where there is a pool, so that we don't have to force our residents to come back for variances because of a conflicting code. So somehow address that. And then I guess my last question was, is the thirty percent open, is that essentially saying an aluminum or a cast iron style fence versus a wood fence?
Not necessarily.
Would it be any kind of picket?
I think any kind of picket fence would would satisfy that.
Just be.
But it couldn't be a stockade, and it couldn't be these vinyl fences that are solid.
Okay.
Cyclone would qualify, too.
But likely, an aluminum or or a cast iron fence would meet that requirement, which I think is, I don't know, that one, that was interesting, but I still think forty-two inches. I like the way Geneva, it looks, I think it's great. I don't like tall fences. And I one other question I had, are we talking about front yards or just street yards?
So our code doesn't make a distinction between a front and a street or yard. So a street yard, if you're a corner lot, you have two street yards.
Okay. Well, even more so then, along with what Alderman Bruno said, because I do not think we should have tall, I'm not sure what the right word, fences that you can't see through in our front yards. If there was a distinction between the two, I think I'd be more apt to go with a forty-eight inch, thirty percent opacity on the side yard, but not on the front yard.
And that's that's part of the direction that can be provided? If that's the will of the council, we can make that distinction in the code?
Because I'm all for aesthetics. I like a white picket fence, but I don't think it should be walling off the view of really our beautiful town. And that's what I'm talking about at the beginning with aesthetics and and protecting that. So those are my initial comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I pause for a second and get a new pen?
Well, this is a financial issue, David. I'm not sure this is relevant to the discussion.
Leave it to the secretary to have.
Thank you.
After Mr. Kocelak, Ms. Ruby, then Ms. Burghart.
Thank you. So a few people have said, I don't like tall fences, and that just makes me think, I feel like we're saying, well, I don't like oak trees, so you can no longer have an oak tree in your yard. I think that's absurd. We can't tell people, we can't impose our preferences on our entire community. For me, the forty-two or the forty-eight is irrelevant. I think I don't think anyone's even going to notice. I don't think aesthetically, forty-two versus forty-eight makes a big difference. If forty-eight is more readily available, it should be allowed. I think open versus privacy makes a difference aesthetically, but again, I don't think that's our place. That's up to each homeowner, whatever they prefer. We, city council should not be mandating what type of fence people are allowed to to put up. There's very little continuity already in our in our fences. When I walk through my subdivision, I see different heights, I see different styles. They all look nice. It doesn't bother me that that they're not all the same. And maybe it does bother some people, but that's not, I just don't feel that's our place to say. I feel that is a very basic right of homeownership, that you should be able to choose if you want to fence, and if you do want to fence, you should be able to choose what it looks Yeah, I I don't think that an increase from forty-two to forty-eight is going to be detrimental in any way. I definitely support that increase. I would even support a six-foot increase, but I'm not going to push that.
I was just going to say, so you would support a six-foot privacy fence in the front yard? Because that's what any homeowner can do.
Sure, if that's what that homeowner wants.
So we'll have a city where?
How many people do you think would really do that?
But that's not the point, is it?
It's a choice.
We make ordinances so that we follow some continuity through the city. So do we want six-foot privacy fences in our front yards?
I, as a homeowner, I wouldn't want that, but I don't think it's my place to tell every homeowner in our city that they cannot have that, because I don't like it.
I disagree. I think that's why we're here, as a matter of fact, to help make these decisions for our community. Thank you.
Well, and you don't know people's situations. If somebody's doing, you know, home daycare or dogs, there could be any number of reasons that that would be a practical, efficient.
Variances are always allowed for and can be applied for. So if there is some unique circumstance, then that can be applied for through the city.
Yeah, I honestly, I just don't see that many people wanting to do that, but I just feel very strongly that is not our place to to tell people that that's not allowed. It's it's their home. I think the fence is not an issue for the city as a whole.
Ms. Burghart, and Mr. Maladra, oh, excuse me, then Dean, then Mr. Maladra.
Thank you, Mayor. I honestly have a few clarifications I need. So the pool question really bothers me. I do feel like, you know, I think there's, since COVID, we've seen more and more people put in pools and and, you know, want to stay close to home. So actually, could you go back to the slide you were on before, because that'll help? So if it was the house, the second from the left there, one of the interior lots, if they put a pool at the back, they could do a six-foot, up to a six-foot fence, sorry, all around the edge of their.
Correct.
Property.
Right.
Okay. Or forty-eight inch, which would meet the pool and SPA code thing, right? If it's on the street yard on the right, how does that person, how do they meet the pool and SPA code?
So they can also do a six-foot fence, provided they stay out of that shaded area.
Okay.
So what we see, though, is on a corner lot, they usually want to take the fence to the property line, closer to the street, to increase the size of the yard.
So that the dash line there is, so if they're behind the dash line, they could do six-foot, they could do forty-eight inches even, or or up to six foot behind the.
In behind the shaded area, right.
Right, okay. But it's still, I mean, that's interesting. I understand what Amy's saying, but I mean, it's still the street yard, you know? I mean, it's it's still visually, it's still kind of the street yard, it's just their back off of the back end of their yard. Okay. And then Craig's, when you were talking about the front yard part, like when somebody's, I'm having trouble visualizing that. You're saying like when if somebody somehow in their front yard is looking out at a six-foot backyard.
Craig, is your microphone on, sir?
My example is the guy on the right built a big fence going out to the, you know, bottom of the picture. I don't know how else to describe it.
Does forty-eight, say forty-eight inches, they did?
Yeah. That impacts the view of the guy to his left, from his front yard or from his living room windows or whatever. And so I think that the expectation of seeing a fence towards the back of your property is something we're all used to. But the idea, especially when we talk about stockade fences and privacy fences, the idea that all of a sudden, or maybe not all of a sudden, but the idea that you're looking out your front window at a wall is troublesome.
Yeah.
It's not the way suburbs are built. Suburbs are built for space. I guess my question in general is, what's the purpose of a setback at all? We can put whatever we want in the setback whenever we want to, just because it's our right.
So a friend of mine, Batavia, lives on kind of a wetland area, and it's beautiful, and she had this beautiful view, and then, but she's on a cul-de-sac, so it's kind of like pie pie-shaped lot, and her neighbor put in, yeah, a six-foot, you know, stockade fence, whatever you call it, and just really did cut off their view, and it just like broke her heart. But it was allowed, and it's interior, so it could happen here even.
And in our case, it's not allowed, and over contemplation.
Well, it's up to six, sorry.
In our case, it's not allowed.
But it could, it could be, because it's that, I mean, if this was the, if you were on a more of a pie lot, the person could put it in their backyard.
Oh, you mean her circumstances?
It was her backyard. It was her backyard. So it like ruined her.
Right.
View of the wetland.
Yeah, sorry, I was wrong.
Backyard, yeah, okay. I mean, I guess I'm leaning toward the forty-eight inch for consistency, to include the pool use. You know, we did have a house in our ward that did put up a, although you could see, so it was one with, you could see through it. And I walked my dog past it, and I thought, that's a little high. And it was six inches over, it was forty-eight inches, and they had to reinstall it. I didn't feel like it was high, just, but I could tell it was higher than your standard for a side lot. So I mean, I'm leaning toward the forty-eight inch again for consistency, and it seemed like a lot of our communities up there are going that way. I did think a lot of the photos you were seeing, David, I was surprised that it was just six inches. Some of those seemed like the difference between a forty-two inch and a six-foot fence to me, but in that.
I agree, when you look at the pictures, it does, but taking the pictures, they weren't six-foot fences. So, yeah, the difference between Jordan Ewing, right? Yeah.
If the scale was a little different, that's on the picture.
All right, I'll continue to listen. Thanks.
Mr. Kilburg.
When did our fence ordinance go into place?
I don't.
History on it, and when did you start enforcing?
My question was, when did when did fence ordinances go into place in Geneva? Does this go back to the seventies or?
I did not go that far back in the history, but these regulations have been in place since ninety-five.
Okay, since ninety-five. So it's safe to say, then, that any fences that were constructed prior to ninety-five probably weren't subject to any regulation?
I don't know if that's true. I would have to, I'd have to go back to the old zoning ordinance.
Unless there was an HOA, and one example.
Right, a homeowner's association.
Yeah, Mr. Caven knows this, when Pepper Valley was built, fences were not allowed.
Okay.
And that lasted about eight hours.
Okay.
We have some HOAs, too, that restrict fence height more than we do. We've come across that as well, so.
Okay, so any fences that were grandfathered in, whenever the ordinance was put into place, those are safe, there isn't going to be any restrictions, or there there's not going to be a requirement for compliance with existing fences then that were historically there before the ordinance was initially enacted?
Right, they're nonconforming, legally nonconforming, ordinary maintenance and repairs allowed. Once they remove it, though, then they would have to comply. If they were to completely tear it down, they'd have to comply with the.
And then probably you get into a situation where people say, well, we're not removing it, we're repairing it pretty extensively.
Yeah, we're removing all but this post, right? Yes, we get into those back and forths.
Okay, I understand that. Could you, could you review the the other communities and their, the trend line that's taking place in, I didn't quite get to see the last two or three there very closely, but it seems like the trending is higher. Is that, would that be, what's the council's assessment of that? Seems like people are moving from from lower to higher, especially in the the front. Yeah, it looks like probably a lot of these have transpired over the last five years then that this this increase in height.
Yeah, it appears that other communities have have at least tried to address the issue in the corner lots.
Yeah.
Of providing some more flexibility there.
Yeah, I wish that we could do some things as it relates to this fence maintenance. I think that that can be more of a concern. I guess a four-foot fence that's been well-maintained, I find a lot more acceptable than a forty-two inch fence that's not been maintained. And I think if if you could regulate that, I think that I think that would probably have a greater bearing on aesthetics than than necessarily the six inches of height variation here. But again, I appreciate your research, and I've got to think about this a little bit more. That's all I had.
Mr. Maladra, Mr. Bruno, and Ms. Mayor.
I kind of asked for, asked this already when I was answering Alderman Burghart, but rather than look at it as a question of, you know, fences specifically, it's more a question of the purpose of a setback. It's what, when we establish this ordinance or any other ordinance about what you can build in a street yard or a front yard or whatever, why, why do we do that? What is it we're attempting to accomplish? And I think what we're attempting to accomplish is a is a combination of openness and some amount of uniformity. I hesitate to use that word, but I can't think of a better word. I think that one of the worst things that could happen to us is a case where you have a block, you know, where every other house has a six-foot stockade fence or something like that. It would change the character of our neighborhoods dramatically. I don't know exactly what I can build in a in a yard like I'm concerned about, something that that's affecting the view from the front yard of the house next door. I mean, could I build a, you know, out to the street sidewalk or street, could I build a shed?
No.
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are things that are not necessarily as big as a house or as big as a wall, but we still can't build those. And the reason is the visual impact on the neighborhood. So we have to be careful about that. I understand the inconsistency and the impact on people with pools, and like Alderman Burghart and probably all the rest of you, that that troubles me, but I am loath to just give it away. We have setbacks and things like that for a reason. That reason, I think, is to protect the character of the neighborhood.
Ms. Mayor, then Mr. Bruno? Oh, Mr. Bruno, then Ms. Mayor, then Mr. Kocelak, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a good point on secondary structures. Can't build, you know, sheds in that same space that we're talking about. But it did come up, Alderman Kilburg mentioned the idea. So if we were to raise this, we could put a cyclone, a homeowner could, by right, put a four-foot cyclone fence in their side yard or front yard, for that matter, which is be the natural extension. Personally, I don't think that's a great look for Geneva. I don't know, and I imagine.
But I'm sorry, Mike, I don't, but they could do forty-two inches now, correct? A cyclone, yeah. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
So we don't have any control over, I mean, they could certainly meet any openness requirements that we want, but if you could go to that slide with the four lots again?
With which one?
You had the four lots.
Okay.
That one, yeah.
Um, so I, I forget who mentioned it. Someone said, well, for, it's, it's different for a side lot, but, um, and you know, that could be an exception for a side lot. Uh, what's not shown here is, let's say that's standard ordinal directions, north, south, east, west. The neighbor to the east that might be facing that doesn't care if that's a side lot or not, uh, that I don't see that that neighbor to the east, uh, needs to, uh, be affronted by that much more mass closer to the sidewalk. That's it. Thanks.
Miss Mayor, then Mr. Swanson, then Mr. Caven, no, then Miss Mayor, then Kocerog, then Swanson, then Caven. Good lord. I've even got numbers down here, so forgive me.
I, uh, couple of things. Fence ordinances are not new. They're not from the nineties. Fences are one of the most contentious legal issues that come to lawyers trying to deal with, uh, property owners that abud each other. So they've been heavily regulated since the beginning of time. Um, I think you'd be challenged to find, uh, a community that let large-scale front yard fences anywhere. Um, I think if you drive around Chicago where most of the homes were built in the twenties, uh, the bungalow corridors, you would see that there are no front fences allowed. And, uh, that, that creates an atmosphere that's very pleasant for those communities and people don't have, so your backyard's a privacy area where you can go with your family and be in your space. And what you do in your backyard, the principle is that anything goes. You know, your neighbors don't get to tell you what you build in your backyard, but your front yard, uh, you know, having drawn homes in the suburbs, the first thing you do is you get the setback on the drawing because that is pretty sacrosanct in suburban home design. And the nicety of a community like where I grew up, there were no front yard, uh, fences allowed, uh, or at least nobody needed them. Dean probably would have liked us a, a fence on his corner so that we didn't cut across the yard and ruin his grass every year. But he didn't do that because it's kind of an eyesore.
It's a public admission of, uh, and there is no, there is no statute of limitations on that, just so.
Yeah, so I will, I will fix your grass.
We've got some photographs.
But I think, uh.
The statute of limitations have run out, so you're.
Okay. The, um, the front yard, I just, I fear that somebody's going to put up, uh, a fence and you're all going to look at it and go, oh my god, this, like, it looks ridiculous. Uh, the historic home on Third or on Fourth Street that has a white picket fence around it, it's very lovely. It's also thirty-six inches tall and it's mostly open. And it's been there probably for hun, a hundred years. Um, backyard fences, I totally agree. Six-foot, whatever you want to do, if it's on the side yard and it's on your, it's out of the setback, whatever. But when you're in the public way, which I consider the setback to be, even though legally it's not a public property, you should respect the setbacks and stay out of that area with fences. Or I think that Naperville's made a pretty decent code that says you can go to forty-two, forty-eight because that's required for pools, but make it visually not a full block, blockade. Um, I think that that's very sensible and I think that, um, we shouldn't think that fence ordinances are brand-new and we're doing something different than what has been done in communities for many, many, many years to set the standard for how people should deal with their property boundary. It really does impact your neighbors, what you do. I think my neighbors would tell you so, so. That's all.
Mr. Kocerog, Mr. Swanson?
Um, can you go back to the, um, communities and what their regulations are? So, and we're just talking about front and side yards, right? We're not talking about back yards. Correct? Okay. So, I, I guess, looking at this, if people want something more standard and forty-two inches is standard, I guess I'm tempted to go with what Batavia and, well, more, uh, I guess what North Aurora and Batavia have, maybe with some opacity on the forty-eight inches like Amy's saying. But if you're going to put it in your front yard, we, or, uh, front street yard, then it should be even lower. And maybe that's where we need to look at adding, um, adding an ordinance. Because I am not as bothered by the side, especially if it looks right. Um, it's well-maintained, as Alderman Kilburg said, and, um, it has that, that see-through nature and not a stockade nature. So, um, I, I mean, I'm seeing thirty-six, thirty-six, thirty-six on almost every community up there for the front yard. And I feel like that's more in terms of aesthetics, what we're talking about is the front yard. Um, and so, if we want something standard, let's go down to thirty-six and then go to forty-eight, um, on the side yards with a certain amount of, uh, thirty-three percent open as, uh, or thirty percent as Naperville and Glen Ellen did. On the street yards, the side street, is side street yard, is that a term or just street yard?
I mean, that's how some communities would, would, excuse me, define it. They would have the front street yard and then the corner street yard. Um, we just have street yard. So we would have to make that distinction.
I think that might be worthwhile. Instead of combining the two, because I think that's where we're getting confused. And what I keep picturing is a forty-eight inch fence in the front yard. And that's what aesthetically I'm not finding at all acceptable, uh, for Geneva from my point of view. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, David, could you go back to the, uh, the map of where you can? I think it had the four homes on it.
That is the go-to map.
That is the one. So, what I've heard from several aldermen is that the privacy for the rear yards is of utmost importance. And, and everyone agreed that that is important. However, if you look at that map, the furthest one on the right has no privacy. Um, and I, you, I understand you can build a five or six-foot fence up to the house, but that really changes the utility of their backyard. Um, so, so I, I guess from a, from a privacy standpoint, I agree. Uh, your backyard is where a lot of people live. And, and so, I, I don't, I'm not bothered by the forty and, forty-eight inches at all on the street side. We, we heard from an alderman that, uh, he didn't have a problem buying anything years ago and it wasn't an issue. However, we also had, uh, an individual come here for a variance saying it was a huge issue. So, there, there's, and that was more recent than five years. So, I, I think, uh, I think we have to listen to the residents and, and they are saying that they are seeing a, a cost issue out there. So, I, again, I think we, we should be, and, and then the, the argument that many of the, our neighboring communities have thirty-six inch front yards, it is just not true. Uh, because if you go to that list of communities, three of them had thirty-six inch front and I think four or five had forty-eight. And the trend line is to go higher, not smaller. So, I, I would definitely not support making our current law more restrictive. And I think the forty-eight inches makes sense to allow our residents more choices and privacy certainly on a side street. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. The floor is wide open. Anyone else? Mr. Caven, sir, then Ms. Burkhart?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think the example of what Naperville has up there, I think, looks to be pretty reasonable. And I'm not indicating that I want a bunch of forty-eight inch fences like in the front yard so it looks like a compound up to the front, uh, sidewalk. I don't, I don't think that that would look fantastic either. So, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not so much in favor of that, but a lot of these people that have contacted us are people who fall into these, into like the corner lots. So if you can go back to the favorite map that everybody likes to have today?
Yeah.
So, the house that, what we're, what we've been calling all the way east or on the right side, that's exactly what I have directly across the street from my house. So, if my house was pictured on there, I am that person across the street to the east. So when I look out the, the absolute front of my living room windows or on the front porch, there's a corner lot directly across the street from me. Um, and they have a, and they have a six-foot fence that runs along that street and it backs to the open field area in Pepper Valley as well. But there's one of those directly across the street from my house. It's well-maintained. Now, it's not all the way up to the curb, it's setback. Yeah, I don't know what it is. Maybe it's eight feet, nine feet? Because that neighbor does have to mow on the outside of his fence as well. They have a dog, they have two young kids under the age of, you know, five or six, and this year they put in an in-ground swimming pool. So, that runs the whole length of their lot directly across the street from my house. So, I mean, I think if something is maintained well, but if they weren't able to have that fence, well, one, they'd have to have something else around their pool. And it's a pretty good-sized lot. Any single person walking by on the sidewalk is able to see exactly what it is that they're doing back there, day or night. So, no, I, I don't, I don't want things to look like compounds or huge fences in somebody's necessarily front yard, but somebody who falls into that category that's on a corner lot, if they're not able to put something up, they have no privacy in their own home or their own yard. So, that's what I think.
If neighbors are not in setback though, if he's at the setback.
Correct, yeah, no, you're absolutely correct. Okay.
Uh, Miss Mayor, your microphone, please.
So, so this is, this would be your neighbor, but the fence is up against the sidewalk instead of being set back that distance. So, I, I agree with you that if you're on the setback line for a corner lot, six-foot, whatever, that's allowable right now. But we're saying if you come forward from that to the sidewalk, that you can do a six-foot wall along the sidewalk. And, and I don't think that's what we want. I, I, I think that that's a mistake.
In that particular instance, there is no sidewalk on that side of the street.
That's correct.
So, it would come to the right of way. The right of way is traditionally, well, we don't know what it traditionally is, it could be eight feet, ten feet from the curb, but, because we, I think we all know the property we're talking about there.
Yeah, and there's another house that has the same fence continuation, so it's all lined up. It's where fences are meant to be, which is not on the side yard setback.
So, as long as it's within that setback, it can go right now. But otherwise, they come to the city for a variation. So after they spend the money, that variation gets.
And we could start waiving.
Generally, generally approved and they're able to put that up anyhow.
But we could, we could waive variances on an, on a per, per condition basis, but I think what you're going to find is if that fence is all the way up near the sidewalk, you're not going to want it to be six feet.
I don't.
It has a detrimental effect on the rest of the properties.
I don't disagree with that. I don't want it to be six feet up to the sidewalk in the front of somebody's house.
So it's forty-eight, what we're saying is that we would allow it up to forty-eight inches in that condition. But I think it should be see-through if it's in, in the area of the setback.
Oh, I don't have a problem with it having to have some visibility through part of it because if it's all the way, if it's all the way to the corner and you're driving in a car, you need to still be able to see around the corner before you enter the intersection. So, yeah, I don't have a disagreement with that either. I would just like to figure out some way to make this so it's not so cumbersome for people to be able to do what they want to do and products that they're able to receive without having to go through, you know, uh, however long the process takes with having to spend the money. I think that that's, I think that that's reasonable. So, however, I would just like something done so that residents don't have to continue to go through this.
I, I agree.
Okay.
I just think it needs to stay with the side yard, not the front yard.
Well, yeah, and I think that in the majority of these instances, the ones that are on the corner, I think that we are more talking about the side yard than we are the front yard. At least the examples that I've seen. It doesn't appear to me that it's really mostly a front yard thing, it's the side yard, so.
Ms. Burkhart?
Thank, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I would not be in favor of decreasing the forty-two inch to thirty-six inch in the front yard. If I understand right, we've allowed forty-two inches up since nineteen ninety-five and I don't, we don't seem to feel like we have a wall of stockade, sent, you know, fences along the front yard. Could we, could we go to some of those photos? I'm really struggling even with front yard fences. I'm trying to think of, I mean, that's just a little decorative thing. That's, that, that house has been totally flipped around to, or reorientate. I know that one on the left.
Yeah.
Um, the one on the. That's on the setback. Or that's, yeah, that's, that's setback, correct?
No, that's, that's right off the sidewalk there. Um, and the, they're both, yeah, they're both right on the property line.
Okay. Uh, but those are on the side. Those are both are on the side, right? So, I'm still looking for like a front yard example. That's a wrought iron kind of thing. So, uh, they're on the left, but that's, what, is that thirty-six or forty-two, I think?
It's forty-two.
Forty-two. Okay. That on the left is.
Looks like it's less than forty-two.
That feels decorative to me almost, you know, again, uh, but thirty-six maybe, I mean, maybe the scale, okay. All right, and that's the back. That's a si, the right is a side. That's, okay, the right one, I'll ask. That's forty-eight inches on the right?
Yeah.
Did they get a variance for a pool on that one or something?
Trying to remember which house that was.
I know that house. I'd, that's not, that's a newer fence. That's what I'm surprised by, I think. Hmm, okay. Uh, so I guess I'd, I'd want to keep, I wouldn't want to see the front yard decrease from forty-two and I'm open to a compromise on the, you know, to get something through to allow, again, for pool owners, maybe the Naperville compromise might be something I would get on board with, which would be the forty-eight inches for the, um, uh, side yards or street yards. I, I wouldn't want to see six feet in the street yard. I, and I don't know that we're, too many of us are talking about six feet in the street yard. I think we're talking, most of us, it seems like we're debating between forty-two and forty-eight here, so. Um, oh, can we go back to the, uh, what variances have been given? Or is it the? There, okay. Sixteen granted, okay, we're going to go through the through lot later, right?
Right.
Four granted to accommodate, that's the spa requirement on a corner lot? This was pool and spa, right?
Right.
Four granted to provide rear year, yard privacy on a corner lot, okay. One granted, okay, for a school, two, okay. So people, if they make a case, some, some have been granted, even not, not, I mean, a pool to me seems like kind of an open and check case if I was thinking of a variance, so, but some people have argued that they just want privacy and want a taller fence for that reason.
On a corner lot, right?
On a corner lot.
Where they want to increase the usable space of their backyard. Um, some of the arguments we've heard of, you know, I, I have a big dog and forty-two inches doesn't cut it.
Right, right.
So.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, may I just say one thing? I just said thirty-six just because it was a more standard fence size. So if that was the concern, that's why I was saying, let's go down to a, lower to a standard fence size. I wasn't necessarily saying thirty-six is a magic number or anything like that.
And we don't preclude thirty-six inches. It's a maximum of forty-two, so. Um, I, I guess.
What?
Go ahead.
Yeah, we've got a couple more comments here, Dave, that might help.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Maladra and then Mr. Bruno.
Um, so, I'm in, I'm inclined to look further at something along the lines of what Naperville does. Um, I would also be curious to know for the communities that do separate the designation of a front street yard, what they do. Um, you said we don't have that designation.
We don't.
So, whereas I may not be, you know, in a hurry to go down to thirty-six inches in the front street yard, I am, I am feeling with, along with Brad, that this is, this is the crux of the problem. And so I'd be interested to know what communities do where they have that designation.
Yeah.
Um, the second thing regarding corner lots in particular and their loss of utility, as I said, they're, they're already losing utility. of utility, as I said, they're, they're already losing utility. They can't build a shed, they can't build a, you know, a warped wall higher than whatever. It, it comes with the ownership of a corner lot. What we're being asked to do here is make a blanket change, and it's a change that I think potentially results in some, something that could change the character of our, of our neighborhood. It looks to me like Naperville is attempting to address that in a way that provides flexibility and minimizes impact, and so I think that looks pretty good. But if we can understand more about the thinking regarding front street yards, that would be good.
And so, you can see that Batavia, Naperville, I think North Aurora, they make a distinction between the front street yard and the corner street yard, so that's why they have the dual regulations there.
Well, and then I see a few of these do different things, too. You could, you have a certain amount of flexibility as long, where the fence aligns with the houses
Right.
next door and things like that. Again, you're attempting to minimize the impact beyond the backyard, I guess, for want of a better term. And that seems to be common. And it also seems to be common that other communities have wrestled with this, and I think that of what we see here, the Naperville approach is the best compromise.
Mr. Bruno, sir, then Ms. Ruby, then Mr. Kozarog.
Thank you. Let me finish one note here. So, you brought it up, we, we currently don't distinguish between side and front yards in our code, in our code. I presume that would be doable, other communities do it, but it seems like that's an axis around what some of the discussion is, is talking about making that exception. So I don't, I don't know if that's a big deal, introducing that distinction. But I won't make you go back to that, that slide again. The, so that, that front yard and the, or the street yard, side yard, it's a technical distinction, but as you described it, that's, that's the public realm. The neighbor to the east of there doesn't care if they're looking at their across-the-street neighbor's side yard, side yard or front yard. I'm looking at this as making that more liberal for the property owner, who bought the property knowing their encumbrances on a, on a corner lot. I'm viewing this to make it more liberal by right, as a taking from, from the rest of the neighbors encroaching in that public realm. I could see, and I don't know how this could be considered, if there were, if nobody's, if we call the north-south street over there, if there were no homes facing that street, if it was all side yards, I could see that being some built-in, give it more latitude in, in that realm. I don't know if I'm clear on that, but if, if that's all side yards on both of the, on the entire block face, I, I could, I could see more latitude there. But again, that's, you'd have to use some, some magic to write an understandable code that would recognize that.
That's the fun stuff, yep.
That's it, thanks.
I think I understand what you're saying, though.
It'll be the end. I'm trying to figure out my scoring system here. Ms. Ruby, then Mr. Kozarog, then what's his face in the back?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually was wondering if we could put a pause on our conversation and hear from some residents. I'd love to hear some firsthand accounts of challenges anyone who's listening may want to share with council to shape the rest of our conversation.
I don't know if there's any hands raised. Are there any hands raised, Ms. Dawkins? There's no hands raised for anyone wishing to speak yet?
Okay.
There might be based on your prompt.
Yeah, that's good, yeah. Anyone listening who is in this situation, I would love to hear the details and take that into consideration as we continue this lovely conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kozarog, sir, you're good? We got a hand raised, and who wants to control that? Mr. McCready?
We have Ms. Patty Lane with her hand raised, and I will be unmuting your microphone one moment.
Hello, Ms. Lane?
Patty, you're unmuted on our end, but you will need to self-unmute so we can hear you speak. Should be good to go now. Patty, just confirming that we are unable to hear you on our end.
I think Ben used to work for NASA. We, we have a problem. Apparently she's talking behind a six-foot fence. She can't...
We do have a separate person, Patrick Lang is also resonating. I will unmute Patrick at the moment. Patrick, you've been unmuted.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Awesome. My name's Patrick Lang. I've lived in St. Charles, Geneva community for my entire life, 33 years, and did live in St. Charles for the last eight years, myself with my wife and kids, and recently moved to Geneva and a corner lot. And my specific lot is Colonial Circle and Clover. And basically, I've gotten five quotes so far, and only one company can do 42 inches. And that's in a aluminum see-through fence. You know, plenty of view for everybody, but the company that can do it is 50% higher than everybody, and just, you know, issues with getting the materials, scheduling, you know, you name it. But, but yeah, you know, I'm a testament to material problems, supply, not a standard size. In my yard in particular, my side street doesn't even have a sidewalk currently. So that's, you know, another thing that wouldn't affect anybody. Nobody's technically usually on my side of the street, but, you know, I get it. But, you know, it's just from a resident standpoint, and seeing it myself, there is an issue for trying to get that size currently. And, you know, I have a family, kids, a dog that, you know, I want to protect. So, I just would rather do that in the simplest, most economic way, not have to, you know, wait a year, special, special order, you know, pay 50% more. You know, I can see a shed being an issue, but, you know, I would have to chop off, you know, a quarter of my yard to get the 48 as it currently stands. And that's kind of all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we want to try Ms. Lane again?
Certainly can. Ms. Lane, I'm gonna try unmuting you a second time. And you're still muted on your own end, but you're clear now if you'd like to go out and try speaking? Just a reminder that typically you have to enable access for your device to use the microphone or connect the microphone to GoToMeeting. Yes. Yep. And we're still unable to hear you, Patty.
Continuing the discussion, we'll see if Ms. Lane's successful in connecting with us. I believe, Mr. Kozarog, you've already asked your question, you said? There's no one else pending, other than that guy, Mr. Maladra?
Sorry.
No, no, it's all good.
Just curious, did we ever find out what a through yard is?
What a through yard?
Or a through lot?
That's the next policy question on fences.
Oh, all right, sorry.
We'll get there.
Okay. That was it. Anti-climatic, sorry.
I think we all know, Ms. Lane, if she's able to join us is, would be great. She is the author of the email I think we all received earlier this week regarding some of the challenges with respect to real estate sales. And Patch, Mr. Lang has your hang-up again, sir?
Mr. Lang, you've been unmuted?
I just had one more clarification. And in my respect, my corner lot, you know, I'm not looking to go up to the front yard at all. I'm looking to end at my back, back of my house, basically. So, I can, you know, I can see where people are concerned from the front, front yard side of things. And in my case, you know, the house to the east of me, his garage faces, you know, the side of my house, or the side where the fence would be. So I just wanted to clarify that front yard thing. I do, I could see where, you know, maybe you have to designate the differences on those two. But, sorry, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And just for clarification, in case Ms. Lane is trying to reach us again tonight, is simply a policy discussion. There is no action being taken. There will be ample time for anyone and everyone to continue the dialogue once a recommendation is advanced based on our discussion tonight. So. Do we want to try Ms. Lane again? And then we'll check with Ms. Mayor? And if Ms. Lane wants to text me at 630-742-8916 with a cellphone number, we can call her. If you want to call Caven, it'll call you 90 cents. It'll cost you 90 cents for the first minute.
Just paid you.
Just a reminder, Ms. Lane has been unmuted.
Okay. Okay. Let's jump to Ms. Mayor, and if Ms. Lane joins us, we'll truncate your commentary.
I think Mr. Lang brings up a perfect point. He lives just around the bend from me, and I would have absolutely no qualms about him having a 48-inch fence on the side yard. I think that that's very reasonable, and we should try to get towards consensus on that, and avoid talking about the bifurcate off the front yard issue, because I don't think we're gonna get consensus on that.
Ms. Lane, are you with us? Anyone else in the dais? Mr. Marx, sir?
Alderman Mayor, just some clarification. So, if it's outside of the setback, you're okay with 48 inches? Do you still want the, the see-through, the 30%, or not? Because...
I, I would prefer the see-through on a side yard, but, I mean, to move this forward, I would give on that, too.
Well, I, I do prefer the, the 30% on the side yard if they're in the setback.
If they're in the setback.
Yeah, if they're in the setback. If they're not, they can do as, as they want. But 48 inches is fine with me, it's just if you come out of the setback, I think you should have the concession on both, is you got the 48 inches and then you, or, but then you have to see the 30% vision. That's, that's the way I am leaning. The front yard, yeah, I would like to see in the code, front yard and, and street and side yard be a little clearer, because I think it would, would help with this discussion. But the way I'm leaning is if you're in the, if you're outside of the setback, you can go up to six feet, but if you come in the setback, you can go up to 48 with, with the 30% open coverage. I, I think that's, I think that pretty much works, and the front yard, I'm, I'm not really sure where to go with that yet.
Mr. Kozarog?
Just gonna come clean. I realized my last house where I built the fence was beyond the setback, and it was 48 inches, so I apologize. So, take back everything I said about 42 inches not being a problem. It didn't come up, was it not a problem, but it was, I want to stand corrected for the, for the record here.
Mr. DeGroot, what say you?
I guess what I'm hearing is there's some openness to 48 inches everywhere, but there seems to be consensus for 48 inches in the corner street yard, and a preference for some opacity in that.
Let the record show, that is the sixth time the word "opacity" has been used tonight. The 11th time we've gone to that, this slide, so.
At least.
Mr. Swanson?
Could I just state, some have mentioned the opacity issue, not everyone. I, I think that's taking away a lot of options for residents. I'm not sure it's necessary, and any resident could put in eight-foot-tall hedges, and, and that's going to change being able to see anything as well, and, and that's not regulated at all. So, so I disagree, I, I am very comfortable with the 48 inches. Six-inch difference right there is that around the mayor, the little difference in lectern is about six inches. I mean, that's what we're talking about, going from 42 to 48 inches. So, I, I'm very comfortable with that change, and I, I think the 30% rule is unnecessary. So, thank you.
We'll take a, Ms. Lane is back with us, we can give that a shot again?
We're gonna try.
Good evening, Ms. Lane?
Ms. Lane, just a reminder, you'll need to, you're unmuted on your end now, if you'd like to try speaking again.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, good evening, welcome.
My gosh, wow. All right, sorry about that.
We were screening your call, sorry about that.
I was logged in as listen only, so I couldn't get out of that. But mainly, my couple things that I just wanted to point out. First off, the gentleman who just brought up the hedges, you know, that's a perfect example of, you know, another situation that, you know, a homeowner has a choice. They can put in hedges, and, you know, you don't have any control over opacity. But my other comment was, somebody was saying like, for the building setback, like, oh, you shouldn't, you know, do, build a 40-inch or, you know, 48-inch fence unless you go back to the building setback. Well, then that should apply for all the lots. So, you know, why would the interior lot people be allowed to build on the lot line and a corner lot cannot? You know, so there's a unfairness there, and it doesn't make sense why you wouldn't allow one, but you allow the others. So that was the other comment. And then the, I think you do have to distinguish between street-side yard, or, you know, streets, or, what do you call it, street-side-front and street-side-side. I think you do have to, you know, distinguish between the two. And, you know, it's a significant hardship for the corner lots to have to, you know, go to a building setback, and, you know, especially when nobody else has to put their fence, you know, to their building setback. You would have little parkways in between everybody's houses if everybody had to do that. If you understand what I mean.
Anything else, Ms. Lane?
Pardon?
Anything, anything else?
Um, no, I just, you know, I, I think, um, you know, something, you know, definitely needs to be done to go to the 48. Um, and I do think you should address the, you know, the, the building setback, that, um, it's, it's not followed for interior, uh, interior lots. Um, and, you know, the corner lots should be able to go to their property line for fences.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
And please stick with us if you'd like.
Okay.
From the dais, Ms. Burghardt.
I want to say I agree with Alderman Swanson. I'm, I'm fine with 48-inch for the side, uh, the side yard, uh, without opacity. Um, and this has also given me serious flashbacks to our outdoor hockey rink discussion about the side yards. So, um, global warming's taking care of that. We don't have as many of those as we did even seven years ago when I joined. So, um, uh, yeah, that's what I, I wanted to say. And I'd, I'd like to see this front yard probably stay at 42-inch. We haven't had a problem with that. I, I mean, but I could be convinced to go up to 48-inch for the front yard, too. So, thank you.
From the dais. We're going to ask someone, perhaps even Mr. Degru, to summarize. I sense where the consensus seems to be, but that'll be the next debate. Anybody want to add? Mr. Kocerog?
I just kind of had a question for Ms. Lane's comments. Isn't the corner lot, the burden is due to sightlines and driving and seeing around corners and things like that? So, you wouldn't have a four-foot solid fence up to the lot line on a corner lot, because you wouldn't be able to see around the corner for safety?
I mean, that, that visibility triangle is really more at the corner and not towards the rear yard. Our regulations just limit the height forward of the house regardless of where it's at in that street yard. So, what we're, I guess what we're contemplating is restricting that to just that corner street yard towards the rear of the lot. Allowing that total 48 inches, and that really should not be a conflict at the, at the intersection.
I agree with that. I agree with Alderman Burghardt, too, about keeping the front street yard at 42, allowing the 48 on the side. And, but I, I don't agree on the opacity issue, issue for whatever it's worth. Put your little hash mark down.
Oh, I, it's, it's nine now. It's nine. Opacity is nine. So, it's exciting. Could be the word of the week. Anyone else? Ms. Ruby?
Thank you, just a quick clarification.
You say opacity, you win $1,000, because it's number 10.
I already stated my preference on that. Um, the, the 42-inch, um, requ, requirement, that's currently in place for the front yard, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and do we have any idea, do we even, do we even have any front yards with 42-inch fences in them? I mean, I don't recall seeing any. I, I know of some 36, but...
We do.
Do you know how many?
I don't. We'd have to...
Okay.
Run a report and see if we can pull that.
Just based on permits, you would...
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine, I was just curious. I, I just, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, if we just made it an even 48 all the way around, you know, if anyone would even take advantage of that in the front. I, I don't see people wanting a taller fence in their front yard, but, um, I, I was just curious.
But they don't. It's the guy on the right building it in.
Your microphone, Craig.
Side yard, which ends up being his neighbor's. As I agree, they probably don't want to build a fence in their front yard, but they're thinking of building a fence in their back southernmost part of their lot, which ends up kind of being in the guy next door's front yard. That's the issue.
Well, Ms. Ruby, the floor is still yours.
I'm good, thank you.
David? Are you still with us?
I am. I, I mean, I think we have enough direction to draft an ordinance.
Do you want to summarize that direction so that all of us at least have a, and perhaps those tuning in?
Sure. I'm hearing consensus to make a distinction in the code between a front street yard and a corner street yard, and to allow 48 inches in that corner street yard. And then we can debate the opacity.
That is 10.
With motions to a draft ordinance. But I, I mean, I think that resolves the conflict between the swimming pool and spa code, and it does provide some more flexibility and opportunity for privacy on these corner lots.
Ms. Mayor, do you want to address the O-word?
Yeah, I would just say that I, I'm okay if we just stop talking about it, and we go with the 48 inches in the side rear yard, the rear side.
Is everyone comfortable?
The side setback.
Is everyone comfortable with that direction, that we eliminate any con, future consideration of opacity? Or do you wish that's still to be on future discussion? When a draft ordinance is presented?
I'd like to recognize opacity.
Okay. That's now 12. Okay. I did.
So, I think, I think it's worth looking at opacity, too. It's really about mass. You, you were teasing me last week about, nobody wants to look out on a wall, right? Well, that's, that's what it's getting at, you know? Six, six feet, four feet, three feet. It's all in the mass of the thing that you have to spend the rest of your life looking at that you don't own. So, I would be interested to see what we can do and how onerous it is to do anything regarding opacity.
I would, too, and I would, I don't know i, if we've already done that study as part of what you did, or look more closely at that in neighboring communities?
We haven't. We just had that example from Naperville. I think what we would have to really take a close look at is the requirements of the swimming pool and spa code, and what type of openness, if that's a better word, is allowed for, to meet those requirements.
How does it work with the swimming pool code if, okay, so you have a 48-inch, which is regulation in the the rear, or the, sorry, the street-side yard, and that fence continues around the front? But now it's only 40... But people don't do that?
People stop their fence for their backyard at the line of the setback, so that it doesn't get governed by the front yard setback, which then requires you to lower it. So, like, my fence is 48, because there was a pool when I moved in. It's 48 all around, but the fence starts at, at, or, uh, at the back of the house or somewhere along the house, which the front of your house is your setback. That's generally the case around Geneva. So, you're, we're just saying that you have to keep your fence behind the front of your, the front of your house at whatever height you want it then. But if it's, it's forward of the face of your house, it needs to be 42 inches or less.
You couldn't just have a post, and then from that post at the front of your house, it goes to 42?
You could do that, but people don't do that. I mean, like, generally...
And my only question was how, how that would affect the pool, uh, compliance?
Would you have to have the 48-inch area gated?
Gated.
So, you couldn't just drop it down to 42 past that point?
Okay, that was my only question. Thank you. Welcome.
Ms. Ruby?
Sorry, I can't help myself. So, we're telling people who have pools, who don't want people watching them lay out or whatever, swimming around in their pools, that they're not allowed to have a privacy fence. We're telling people that have little Chihuahua dogs that can squeeze out through the gaps, that they're not allowed to have a privacy fence?
No, that's not it.
No, but the opacity, that's the issue with the opacity, is it not? If you're saying that they have to have spacing...
Only if they're in the setback. If you have a pool, a, a fence on your property line and you're in, you're in a middle lot, you can put up any height fence you want, and you can have your pool there. It's the side, it's the corner lots. If they have a six-foot-high fence in their, within the setback, that's a problem. It should be aligned with the face of the houses, generally.
Craig, your microphone?
Yeah, you, the green line could be a six-foot privacy fence. But once it moves forward of the house into the street yard, is when it would have to drop down to 48 inches, and we would contemplate the openness of the fence.
Okay, so, how is that not an issue for people with small dogs, then? If... I mean, I know a lot of people that have little dogs that get out of their fences.
You can still, you can still have openness and visibility through a fence. Um, I guess the way the, the vertical boards are placed, you can space them so you can still see through, but the dog can't get through.
Okay, yeah, I still feel like this is like telling somebody, um, you know, what type of tree they're allowed to plant, or what type of flowers they're allowed to have in their yard. I, I just don't think it's our place. I, I think if anybody wants a privacy fence, they should be able to have a privacy fence, if that's what they choose. So, thank you.
Mr. Kilberg, sir?
Yeah. It might be helpful. Oops. It might be helpful for some clarification. Okay, you have, uh, the, uh, the setback, then, would be from the property line? I'm saying, the easement, uh, is from the center of the street, right?
No.
Okay, I'm tr...
I, I guess I'm not understanding the question.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to determine where the property line is established on, uh, a residence that has sidewalk.
It's typically about a foot inside the sidewalk?
Typically.
Typically, but we require, apply the survey with the permit application to verify where the line is.
But it's measured, though, from the center of the street, correct? In most instances?
Depending on how the, the surveyor... Yeah, I mean, there's benchmarks, whether it's the rear lot line, uh, electrical easement, center of the street, yeah.
And then the setback would be from the property line?
Setbacks are taken from the property line, correct?
You know, I think that a lot of people feel as though their property line runs up to the sidewalk. I think there's a lot of confusion in the community that feels as though their property is, abuts the sidewalk, although it doesn't in a lot of instances. It could be three feet, it could be four feet, uh, uh, inside the sidewalk.
Right.
Is that, is that correct?
That's fair. That'll come up in our next policy discussion.
Do you, do you run into that confusion very much?
Um, we do, yes. And that's why we, we require the survey to make sure that it's remaining on private property.
Visibility on any fence, I believe, should be continued to be discussed. So, as you draft an ordinance based on the ramparts described, let's include that O-word in there.
Gotcha.
We can have it out, and hopefully invite others to participate in that discussion. Does anyone feel differently about that? Strongly, or...
Well, nobody's insisting that we have to have it, but it would be interesting to see what form it could take, so that we can make an informed decision.
Correct, yeah, there's not a consensus to remove, so therefore, or to remain, thus therefore, we're going to keep it in. Yes, Ms. Burghardt?
Thank you. I would just ask that we, when it comes back to us, we have some examples and photos to show us what visible fences would be, and the kind that you're talking about that might allow for, wouldn't allow for a dog to escape. I think I have a guess as to maybe what you're saying. But, um, but yes, just to see some examples. And I'm going to challenge myself in the next couple of weeks, as I drive around town, to really pay attention to fences, and especially front and side yard, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this matter, before we transition to the new one? Oh, that's true, I'm sorry, forgive me, we're not just, chapter two of fences, yes.
Two more questions. I, I believe they should be shorter discussions on fences.
Way to jinx it, nicely done.
Okay. So, as we just discussed, the swimming pool and spa code requires a 48-inch barrier around a swimming pool. That requirement is waived in the international code, um, under these conditions, when you have a powered safety cover that complies, um, with ASTM F-1346. We have removed that exception. So, what that means is we, the city of Geneva, requires a fence around all swimming pools. Um, we recently received an appeal to this requirement. The, the homeowner has a fence, but the fence doesn't meet the requirements of the code. Um, but they will also be installing the powered safety cover. So, they would like us to consider the combination of those two as equal or better protection than what's, what's required with just a fence. But I thought I'd bring it up, since we're having this policy discussion, it was rather timely. I thought I'd bring it up today. We looked at other communities in the area to see what they do. Do they allow for that exception? And, um, we're not alone. Most communities require the fence around a swimming pool in all cases, and have eliminated that exception. With the exception of St. Charles, they recently amended their codes and did not remove that exception.
St. Charles did not remove that exception?
Right, so they would allow a powered safety cover without a fence around it. Um, the concern, obviously, is that it's, it's wonderful cover. You can stand on it, you can close it at the click of a button. But if you don't, the pool is still open to anybody passing by or attracting children and pets from neighboring properties. Um, so I guess the question for the council is, is, do we want to consider putting that exception back in and allowing pools to not be surrounded by a fence, provided they have an approved cover?
Have fun on this one. The floor is open. Ms. Mayor?
I, I would always vote no on that.
Okay.
I just, I, I think that it's important that there be a physical barrier. I've seen pool covers not work. I've seen pool covers get animals stuck under them. I think that it's a horrible idea to waive the barrier. So, I would never vote in favor of removing the barrier.
And David, if I have a pool in my yard, and my yard is fenced in irrespective of the height of the fence, but the minimum standard, and I do not have a barrier on my pool, I am in compliance.
You don't have a cover on your pool?
I don't have a cover on my pool. I'm in compliance.
Yeah, we don't require the cover.
Ms. Burghardt?
Yeah, I'm with Alderman Mayor. I would always require the, the fence. I am not in favor of waiving that, uh, allowing that to take the place of a fence. There's a lot of double negatives, it feels like, so, thank you.
I'm keeping a record of those as well. Mr. Bruno?
Um, I, I, I don't have an opinion one way or the other. It seems interesting. Uh, I'd have to know some statistics. But I don't know if those statistics would be out there. But, uh, my gut tells me a physical barrier is the safest. But if those get around what we just spent an hour and a half debating.
Mr. Kocerog, and then Mr. Kilberg. Mr. Kilberg, then Mr. Kocerog.
I'd agree with, uh, uh, the barrier, in that, um, cover's nice, but, uh, I think there can be, uh, you can have the barrier off, and, uh, you could be inside, or you, you leave for the afternoon, and something could happen. I just think the fence, uh, is the correct approach.
Mr. Kocerog?
Is there, people currently have 42-inch fences, because that's our current code, and then they have a pool installed, then what do they do?
Well, if they have a pool installed now...
After the fence.
After the fence. So, that's kind of the situation we're in, but it's not a 42-inch fence. Um, it's more about the spacing requirements between, I think, the horizontal members on this fence. Um, and why, and why they appealed. They've, they've even added to that fence, um, trying to get closer to compliance. So, I guess in that situation, if you have a 42-inch fence and you're going to add a pool, you can add the cover and appeal, and say that you've got a combination of an existing fence plus the cover. Um, or you could make modifications to your fence to bring it into compliance, or replace the fence.
I mean, I would say it's almost the same question, whether it's the height of the fence or the spacing in the fence. The point is, you built a fence to code, then you have the pool with the cover. Now, uh, now what do you do? And I'm wondering is, if there's any interest, or if there's even a way to address this sort of conflict? And if we're going to change our ordinance for fences to 48 inches, is there a way to address this in the ordinance? Or would it only be allowed through variation or appeals?
I think in this situation... I think in this situation, probably only through the appeal process, because it is a base standard in the international code. It's not a local amendment, it's not a local regulation, so I think you would have to go through that appeal process, and the applicant has to demonstrate that they have equal or better protection than what the code is requiring, and that's something we'll be considering shortly, it sounds like.
Mr. Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a strong opinion on this, I guess my question to you would be, is the international standard, are the international standards usually very stringent, or what do we know that the international standards would be missing with this issue?
So, if the international codes tend to be kind of the base, the minimum requirements, then amendments typically would be more restrictive than the base code. And that can be based on geography, based on weather conditions, depending on which code we're talking about, based on experience with swimming pools, or events that have happened in the past, the ability of your fire department to fight a fire of that size, all of those things come into play.
But the international standards would have addressed how safe these covers are to prevent drownings, one would think.
Right.
So, I guess what I'm hearing is everyone says that fences are superior, however, because a cover may not close, however, a fence is only as good as you close the gate. So, we're kind of, we're saying one is better than the other because it could fail, but both can fail, so I guess, I'm kind of with Alderman Bruno, I'd like to see the data on this one, if there is any data to look at, but I don't feel strongly on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Berger?
I guess we were talking, you know, on the tides of the fences, we're so worried about the neighbors, and the neighbors are looking out on this wall of fence, and, oh my God, what if I'm in, and mine is oriented this way and I see this wall? We're talking about children's lives here, like, if I had a three or four-year-old and the people next to me had no fence around their in-ground pool, like, and I just relied on their teenager to like use the power cover after they leave, or the teenager goes in to use the bathroom and get some food, and no, takes a nap, and suddenly my kid's playing on the swing and they're next door, I mean, it just, psh, I can't even believe some of us are like thinking about this, like, I, I mean, yes, a gate can fail, but you know what, as a mom, I can run out and like close the neighbor's gate, I don't know how they'll feel about me running in their backyard to hit their power button on the pool, like, I mean, we saw how many suburbs do not allow this exception, I mean, we talked for an hour and a half about these fences, I just can't believe we would, I mean, it just seems, I mean, my parents have an above-ground pool, like, that's where, you know what, you want a pool, you have to do the safety measure, and the safety measure is a fence, and I'm like amazed that the international standard even allows that, I can't imagine like a homeowner's insurance would give insurance to somebody that doesn't have a four-feet, you know, fence around it. And what you were talking about, Brad, I mean, remember, an interior lot could have a six-foot fence without a variance, we're only talking about a corner lot where the 42-inch comes into play, so I feel like so strongly as you're gonna tell about, I just think, you know, drownings happen in an instant, and I just think if somebody wants a pool, then they need to put the appropriate fence around it, so, and I'll make a fuss about this if we actually go farther, thank you.
I think it's important to note, Mr. DeGroot was asked the question about the code itself, you responded to Mr. Swanson regarding how it's developed, et cetera. The bottom line is that a code, the international code, is actually voted upon by code enforcement officers, by building commissioners, by folks in the industry, including but not limited to those who might have a contrary opinion on what is best. You see it all the time, whether it be the National Association of Home Builders, respectfully, who will vote on a code, you might see professional pool installers, they have the ability to also vote on the code, as do elected officials, if they subscribe to the International Code Council, which of course Geneva does. It's an amalgamation of all sorts of different interests, and it is amazing, to Ms. Berger's point, that something can sneak through that, I think naturally you think, huh, how the heck did that happen?
Automatic pool covers break often, too, so, I mean, it's not just whether or not they didn't get their teenager to close it, it's, it's broken, it's stuck open, we can't close it, we don't have a fence, so it's a horrible situation to be in.
My sense, Ms. Ruby, please.
Thank you, I just wanted to say I definitely support my fellow older mamas.
Older what, older moms?
My older mamas, yeah.
First time that term's been used.
We're, yeah, I mean, without a doubt, it's, it just makes sense, so. David, I'm curious, the example that you were citing, so they have a 42-inch fence existing?
I think it's actually a 48-inch fence.
Okay.
We'll be bringing the appeal forward in the next few weeks to the committee of the whole. They have an existing fence that they installed before they got a pool, and they got the pool, and the existing fences not meet the requirements, the spacing requirements of the swimming pool and spa code, so they made some modifications, they're proposing to change the gate and add the safety cover, and appeal on that basis, rather than replacing the entire fence.
Okay, so the spacing requirements, I don't know exactly what you mean there, but maybe that's for a different conversation?
Yeah, we can get into more detail in a few weeks, but...
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
If I, Mr. Kilburg, just one quick question. What's the, when we say 42 and we say 48, is it the actual height of the fence, or is it the length of the lathe, or the picket?
It's, well, no, it's, it's the height of the fence, and then you get four inches to account for grade and drainage underneath the fence.
So in other words, somebody that has a 42-inch fence to comply, actually could elevate that 42-inch fence on their post if it was a wooden fence, let's say, and then if they wanted to, put flower beds in and put wire across the base, chicken wire or some kind of a barrier there, and that would be in compliance then. So it's not the length of the lathe or the picket, it's the height?
Height above grade. Sorry, I almost threw my pen in.
So it's height above grade?
Right.
Okay.
And it was not too long ago that we adopted what the Kane County Stormwater Management Committee recommended by elevating our fences.
Allowing that up to four inches.
In order to allow stormwater and everything else, so, yeah. And a lot of people did put the chicken wire, barbed wire, or electric fences down. My sense is that there's a strong opinion, consensus opinion, that fences would be required, there would be no interest in abdicating the requirement for fences in place of a electronic or otherwise strong and sufficient cover for a pool. Is that a fair assessment? Theoretically speaking, then, there would be no action to take, we would just stay the course.
Right, I included it in the conversation because we have this appeal that was filed, and didn't want to go through that process if there was a different opinion. So the last item on fences are through lots.
Here you go, Craig, through lots.
A through lot... No, a through lot is a lot that has frontage on two streets, so if you think of the lots that back up to Randall along Cambridge, or back up to Kirk Road, or we have some that back up along Kaneville, too, the backyards kind of have frontage on two, or backyard has frontage on a street, so it's a front yard. So in that situation, our code does not provide any real clarification on what's a street yard, because you could interpret it to say both of them are street yards, and when we go through those variations, we had 16 out of the 27 that were granted to allow a greater height on a through lot, and when I go through those variations, it looks like it has been interpreted differently over the years, where some administrators have said, no, it backs up to Kirk Road, it's definitely six feet, it's a rear yard, where others have said, no, it's a street yard, it fronts on a street, it should be four feet. So I guess what we're looking for is to clarify in the code, so it's not my interpretation versus Eric's, or whoever follows us, to make sure that it's clear, that it's, if it's opposite the front yard, it's the rear yard, and it's allowed up to six feet, provided that, again, that rear yard does not butt up to somebody else's front yard. That makes sense.
We'll find out. Mr. Bruno?
My reflexive thing is to think if it's, if that other lot, if the other side backs up to a residential street, then it's the same as the other end. If it backs up to a state or a county highway, yeah, just do whatever you want.
If it's a, like, so a ranking of the streets, if it's a arterial, or...
Yeah, if there's a residential street, then I think that's the, that would click it back down to make it match the other, the other end. That'd be my instinct.
Ms. Mayor?
So, let's take the example of Randall, do we actually have a setback on Randall?
Well, you have the rear yard setback for the house, it's like thirty...
Yeah, but you can go to the property line on rear lot setbacks, right?
With the fence?
Yeah.
Yes, but...
So this would be on the through lot, they can go to their property line with the rear fence...
So...
Standard, which doesn't have anything more than, I mean, it can be six feet.
Be six feet, could be a privacy fence, right. Obviously on Randall, the variations there were to go beyond six feet, but in some of them, it was a variation from four feet to eight feet, in others it was from six feet to eight feet, so there's been a different interpretation, and the code is not clear if, you know, if this is the through lot, if you can see my mouse there.
David, where is this location? Forgive me, I can't see the picture clear.
This is Kirk Road.
It is Kirk.
Near Division, so these are all four feet along Kirk Road, there is an HOA there, and covenants and restrictions that restrict it to four feet, but I think that's also been in sync with the administrators that have issued permits here. We do have a resident in this area that would like to go higher, and he understands that he's gotta work with Shodin to amend the covenants, but if he's successful in doing that, which it sounds like they might be open to, we just want, I guess, clarification or consensus that we agree this is a rear yard and should be able to go up to six feet.
I think it's a rear yard where there's no front yards adjacent.
Right.
Yeah, that's, I think that covers it pretty well, because if you did have somebody who owned a double lot, like a tandem lot through, as the illustration shows, and not just a bunch of rear yards in a row facing a main street, then you'd want to keep the standards applied, but in the case of Kirk Road and Randall Road, obviously, it should be allowed to be at variance with the rest of the, or it should be a rear fence.
Yeah, I follow.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Kilburg?
So I have a better understanding of through lot, some examples, between, I believe it's Colonial Circle and Williamsburg, there's a sidewalk that cuts over to Williamsburg Elementary. Now, would that be considered a through lot, and those properties that are adjacent to that, would they be able to, would this apply?
Colonial Circle and where? Williamsburg? I can't picture that, I'm sorry.
So, there's a sidewalk easement running between two lots, and the fences are on, well, one property has the fence along the easement, the other property, in the case that Dean's coming up with, is not, is open, there's no fence.
So it's not a street?
It's not a street, it's not a side, there's no setback, it's just an easement for a sidewalk.
I mean, that would be my understanding of a through lot, or, I mean, I guess, another example would be Lyons Park, if you're coming off Lyons Park to the north, it would take you to Westfield, and there's another example would be, there's a path that would go from the Sprinkle Park off of Westfield as well, you know what I'm talking about, Becky? Those, in other words, if somebody wanted, I mean, would that be considered as a through lot?
No, I mean, a through lot is when you have two streets on either side of your property.
Well, you have streets, the example of the one off of Williamsburg, you would have two streets on both sides, and this would be a through lot.
I can't visualize it, so I have a hard time saying for certain, but I mean, we could look at that, if we were to come back with an amendment, we would do a more detailed analysis of the community and make sure we're not creating any unintended consequences.
Uh huh. Well, you know what I'm talking about, Gabe?
I don't think that they, those are two separate, one house backs off of Colonial, and it's a different house that's on Williamsburg, that isn't the same, that isn't the same individual lot that has a street on both sides. There's multiple houses stacked up there, so I don't think that that would be considered an outlaw, but what I was gonna say was, I understand that maybe would be something coming, but we're basically asking right now, if it is a through lot and your property has a street running in the front, and there's a street in the back, are we okay with the taller fences, and it sounds like the answer is yes, if it actually fits that description, right?
Right.
Is that, I'm not trying to speak for anybody, but they technically have a...
I'm hearing yes, but mostly along like major streets and not...
Your phrase of street rankings, I think, is critical to the discussion.
Right, so we'd have to put some parameters on that.
Then Mr. Swanson?
Thank you. I understand the distinction with Kirk Road and 38, and I just wanted to make sure that we still are addressing if there is a front yard next to them, because people do live on 38 and Kirk and these streets, so that's the important distinction, not that it's a state highway or a county highway, it's, does the property front a front yard of a neighbor, and that's the distinction that I would make. Thank you.
Ms. Berger?
So what I'm understanding what Alderman Swanson's saying is like, that illustration, the little top corner left one, that would be, or what Amy referred to, too, like, you could have front yards there, right, you could have people who've built on those two lots, and we're saying if they say, well, my front, you know, my front door is on the one at the bottom, and I want to put a six-feet fence at the back of what the through lots is, then the front, you're saying like their neighbors really would have the six-foot fence, right?
Of course, looking at the picture up there where the pointer is, if they were saying, well, we want our backyard all the way at the top to have a six-foot fence, that would be not allowed, because they have a neighbor to their left which has a front yard there.
Right, okay.
So, but we could revisit the entire discussion we started at seven, which I think would address a lot of these issues. But you're, that's exactly right, because it has a front yard next, it would not work.
Right, okay, and my parents are on a through lot, so I do understand that, in fact, my dad was gonna, he's in Springfield, but was gonna build a garage, and he wanted it, the exit to be on the other street, the rear street, and the, as soon as he put the sign in the yard saying it was gonna get built, neighbor up the street complained, so that, put an end to that, but, so, these are complicated lots, sometimes the through lots, so, okay, thank you.
What do you think, David?
I think we've got some parameters to work with, I do think it needs to be clarified in the code, so we'll work on that, and we'll put some parameters on it and bring it back. So that's fences.
If it's true that good fences make good neighbors, so does good debate, apparently, huh? Item two, folks, policy discussion on encroachment in the public right-of-way. This again is Mr. DeGroot's bailiwick, I believe he has a presentation for us, and then, David, do you prefer questions at the end, or organically throughout?
Yeah, maybe at the end, be a little bit of clarification in the beginning, and then it'll go pretty quick. So the second discussion is on right-of-way encroachments. The impetus for this discussion stems from a request to replace a porch at 140 North Harrison, that porch encroached into the public right-of-way by about 1.16 feet, the replacement porch was required to be reduced inside to remove that encroachment, and then a variation was also required to allow for a reduced setback for the porch to go right up to the property line. That variation was approved by the council back... That variation was approved by the council back in February, allowing the porch to be replaced nearly in kind, extending to the private property line, but removing the right-of-way encroachment. But following this case, there was kind of a desire to talk about our regulations pertaining to right-of-way encroachments, and more specifically, I think, to get an understanding of how many might be out there, and what kind of regulations we might allow to, allow them to be repaired, maintained, or remain over time. So, just quickly, regulations pertaining to the use of the public right-of-way are in Title VIII of the city code, and that deals with public properties. Right-of-way is an area of land dedicated for streets, sidewalks, lighting, curbs, utilities, drainage facilities, et cetera. That's what's shown here in orange, and again, kind of, if you look at the street there, it typically goes to about one foot outside of the, the sidewalk. And then our regulations pertaining to the use of private property are found in Title 10, which is the zoning ordinance, and zoning, of course, regulates use, but also things we've been talking about, setbacks, lot coverage, building heights, landscaping, fencing. The extent of the private property in this illustration is shown in black, and then, of course, there are easements. Easements are located on private property, but give access to another, typically for utilities, or another public or quasi-public purpose, like drainage. So, back to 140 North Harrison, there were two main issues with the, the placement of the porch. The first was that it was not completely located on the private property, it did extend into the Jefferson Street right-of-way by a little over a foot. And then the second was that it did not meet the required street yard setback of 20 feet. So, we have one issue that kind of is dealing with Title VIII, and one, one that's dealing with Title XI zoning. So, the first issue is governed under 8-1-5 regarding encroachments and obstructions. As it's stated here, it's unlawful for any person to erect, maintain, or build any structure which encroaches in the street or other property. The extent of this language, I mean, this is the extent of the language, there's no exceptions made, there's no means for appeal or variations, so therefore, the applicant was instructed to remove the encroachment and reapply. And then the second issue, again, was a zoning issue. The zoning ordinance does have some non-conforming provisions for existing structures. It allows them to be maintained, ordinary repairs and maintenance over time. There's also some exceptions that allow them to be expanded to the same degree as the existing encroachment into a required setback, but we don't have that same kind of language in Title VIII. So, we went through a little bit of a study, trying to figure out how many encroachments we might have in the public right-of-way. We were able to identify 35 potential encroachment, encroachments, and most of them were on private residential property. As was the case with 140 North Harrison, most of them were built a long time ago, most dating back to before 1950. Eighteen of the potential encroachments we identified were accessory residential structures, many of which were garages, which appear to encroach into the rear alley, as, as well as some that appear to encroach into the public right-of-way of, of our streets. It's important to note that these are potential encroachments. And we, we only looked at these aerial photographs with property lines overlaid, these base maps, again, and street views. There's, of course, room for distortion in these sources, so they're not exact representations. Here's a few more examples of garages that appear to encroach into the public right-of-way. If you look at the maps, you could see they kind of cross the blue lines. We also identified a few principal structures that appear to cross the property line and enter the public right-of-way. That was about 13 of the 35 potential encroachments. And you could just, just, by looking at the maps, it looks like the, the buildings cross over that blue line. And then we also had some commercial structures, about four of the 35 encroachments were commercial 35 North Bennett appeared to cross over, 28 North Bennett, kind of zero lot-line zoning districts, so it could be that they, they are fully on private property, but looks like it might go over. So, the next step we took was to go through our records and see if we could identify or locate plats of survey that would confirm these potential encroachments. We were only able to locate surveys for eight of the properties, and of those eight surveys, we found that four of the encroachments were confirmed and four were not. So, here's an example of a confirmed encroachment. The buildings are located on private property, but the fence encroaches into the public right-of-way, probably because they didn't know where that sidewalk was, or where the line was outside of the sidewalk. This plaque confirmed that the buildings are located on private property, but that the patio encroaches into the right-of-way. So, again, that, the aerial image was, was a little bit off, but with the survey, we were able to confirm some of the improvements did cross the property line. This plaque confirms that the principal structures are within the public right-of-way, and not by a little. So, that's, that's an interesting case study for us. And then finally, here's an example of the plaque confirming that all the improvements were actually on the private property, and the aerial photograph was suggesting otherwise. So, what are the city's options when we have confirmed encroachments in the right-of-way? Right now, our code does not allow for anything. It doesn't allow for the continued maintenance of the structure, which is, in a, in a way, contradictory to our property maintenance and code enforcement regulations. We can look at revising the code to provide some non-conforming provisions, allowing for ordinary repair, maintenance, and I guess potentially the continuation of some of these under, under some conditions. When we have a confirmed encroachment with a plat of survey, we can look at the possibility of vacating right-of-way, a portion of right-of-way to accommodate, to, to move that encroachment onto the private property. We would, of course, have to look at our utility locations and make sure we have any easements that we would need. And then the fourth, which we have done in one or two instances, is to consider entering into a licensing agreement, which would allow the encroachment in the right-of-way. The city's taken this approach, I think the most recent one I can think of is just Catty Corner from us at, you know, Country Store. The access to the building was within the right-of-way, the necessary access to the building was located within the right-of-way, so we, it was kind of unavoidable, they had to maintain that access and repair that stoop, so we entered into a licensing agreement, and I think we required insurance as well for that. I think that's, that's all I have on, on that topic, and I'm just opening it up for discussion on how we, how we think we should treat these encroachments when we come across them.
Mr. Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I asked for this property, or this policy discussion because the property was in the fifth ward and, and was working with the resident. And, and you mentioned that specifically, that was the, the 13-inch encroachment on, on the right-of-way. I, I did want to point out that the house was built in 1925, so, so this encroachment went back a long time. So, so I guess, in your options that you had at the page before, I, I don't really care, we kind of took option one with this resident, and said, it, it's a violation of the right-of-way, it's got to change, we don't have any options. And, and I didn't think that was very flexible with our, our resident. So, so I, I like option number two, I, I would like us to pursue that. I, I guess the, the question I have to you is, when we removed the right-of-way at 140 North Harrison, what did we gain by doing that? Because I think right-of-ways are always different, and on different streets, they may be 10 feet, they may be 20 feet, and some are used and some are not. Some have sewer lines, some have water, you know, it's, it runs the gamut. So, I, so I guess the question would be, did the city gain anything by removing the encroachment? And, and if not, then, then why weren't we more accommodating?
Well, I think we, we weren't more accommodating because we don't have that authority within the code as it's constructed, so we were...
Okay. And that's past tense, and I, I guess I'm bringing up for all of the council, is can we be more accommodating? And do we need to be rigidly enforcing these for any reason?
I think the, like, the difference between that situation and maybe the Country Store was, a modification to that porch could be made to bring it onto private property and still provide code-compliant access to the building, where that was not the option for the Country Store. And that's when we explored another option with our legal counsel to enter into this licensing agreement. So, I think what we gain is, we, I guess we remove the liability of this, that we have this obstruction in our, on our public property by pushing it back onto the private property. And in that instance, the, we did grant a variation so that the porch could be replaced in the future at the, at the lot line with the zero setback.
And, and I understand how it ended up. I, I guess now we know there are 35 potential other entities out there, or properties, and, and some of them are going to want to replace a garage. And, and, and at that point, we're going to come back and say, nope, your garage is six inches too far, you've got to make your garage smaller. So, now we have changed the usefulness of this home, and, and again...
Well, we haven't yet, because we have the options to choose from, so...
Understood. But if we didn't change anything, that would be our approach. We would say, no, you have to get off our right-of-way, doesn't matter whether we're using it, doesn't matter if there's anything there, you are a liability to us. So, so I think we should try to be more accommodating. These people have owned homes, built, most of them were 1924, or whatever it was, the 1920s. These, these encroachments have existed, and, and unless there's a overwhelming need to remove it, then I think we should explore other possibilities to allow them to stay and to be rebuilt. I guess for, for the porch option, because it was made out of wood and started rotting, and they needed to replace it, that's when we found out about it and said, no, it's got to go. What if it had been brick? What if it had been stone? And then, then it stays for perpetuity, and, and again, how, how do we address that situation? So, so it seems that just because something needed to be repaired, and they were doing everything right, they ended up having to be punished and make something smaller. So, so again, if we're not using the right-of-way, if there's not something underground, I think accommodating alternatives should be explored. Thank you.
Mr. Maloudra?
So, I'm just curious about, I don't know the details about 35 of these circumstances, but for, for something as small as, you know, a foot and a half, why option three isn't something we would just look at? Like, what do we lose if we give up a foot and a half of right-of-way? And I'm, I'm just curious, I'm not asserting that we should do it, I just don't, don't understand why we would make such a mountain out of a third, you know, foot and a half molehill.
Well, I don't, I don't know that vacating the right-of-way would have been any less cumbersome than taking a foot off the porch. I mean, because we've been through that process of vacating a property. I'm not, I'm, it's a process, though, and it takes time, and it takes investment to do, so I don't know that that's less cumbersome. We outline the options to the resident.
Well, but what I'm thinking about is something along these lines. So, let, let's assume for a minute that even though these things were built a long time ago, they were still built in the right-of-way, and we had no problem with it in one case since 1925, why don't, why don't we just vacate? I mean, in principle, I mean, I get that the process is cumbersome, but in principle, it obviously didn't matter to us.
Well, I mean, it, case by case, you'd have to take a look at it to make sure it doesn't matter to you.
Absolutely.
That we don't have utilities there, or we don't have plans to extend a sidewalk. You also don't, you don't want a bunch of jagged lines for your right-of-way.
And some of them, like if it's a garage, that's kind of bigger than a foot and a half. I get that that could have a bigger impact on us, but it would be important to understand why it's worth maintaining that right-of-way, you know? To just say, oh, you know, let's, let's look the other way, because it's an inconvenience to the homeowner is not necessarily smart, but it's also not smart to assert that we need the right-of-way just because. We should understand the impact of...
Right.
Ms. Mayor?
I think if there's 35 properties that have these variances, and it looks like a lot of them were built even in the 1850s, and a lot of, at odds, were in the 20s or 19, early 1900s, that we should probably go with option two and entitle those existing structures to remain for ordinary maintenance and repair. I think the protection that we want to have is for, what, what happens in some communities is that they'll take down that structure and put up a different structure and use the, the encroachment that was granted to do that. That's why the ordinary maintenance and repair is, is an important part of this. I think that we should do that because it'll set a clear line in, in the sand that, you know, these properties have, have been at odds with the code, and now they are not, and no, you know, no further encroachments would be allowed. People know when they buy a property that has an encroachment on the right-of-way, it's not something that they just discover. When you buy a property, the encroachments are very clearly shown on the plat of survey, and any real estate attorney should show the homeowners that encroachment, and they should understand that when they buy. So, I think that it's a, it's a process where we should get the people that have encroachments in and review and approve them, and, and move it forward so that we don't end up in awkward situations where somebody's porch is rotting and they have to tear down the whole porch. I don't think that's a good look on the city at all.
I think that the, the struggle we have is that we don't have all the plats of survey. We get them when they come in for a permit. So, even of these 35, we can only locate eight plats of survey. So, there may be 30 encroachments, we, we may have a handful, but we can't really know that until we have those plats to review. And I think to your point of, of the ordinary maintenance and repair, standard non-conforming provisions allow for that, but once the structure's completely removed, that's when the expectation is you comply with the code, at least from a zoning perspective. I haven't really looked at non-conforming encroachments and, or structures in the right-of-way before, but that's something we, we can look at, if that's the option the city council wants to take.
Mr. Bruno, then Ms. Berger?
Thank you, Mayor. So, you said, first of all, who did you get to, like, stare at these maps in such detail?
Interns.
So, so we say we've identified, well, 34, 35 potential. Is that an upper limit? Is, could there be 50 or 100? We just didn't catch them during this review?
I mean, we could go through it again. My, I instructed them to look at the older areas of town, where we're more likely to come up, and that's, that's where we found, yeah, most of them.
Which, that's, that's, that's fair, so we, we probably don't have a lot more than It seems, I mean, I think there's, I think each of those options is right for different situations. I think it's fair to notify those property owners that, you know, we've recognized that, you know, your property potentially could be in non-compliance or non-conforming, and when we have a, when we land on what our menu of options would be, you know, we can, we can say, when, when you need to replace this, you know, you, let's say we end up, you can, you can maintain this in perpetuity, if you have to replace it, these are your options. If you have to replace it, these are your options." But it seems like so much of this is so long-grandfathered, I don't want to go around and browbeat residents, but, you know, if they have to do serious work on their property, they should know, and they should know that there's going to be some pretty close review on it. So I think it seems like there should be a way that we could have all of those options in our quiver. Thanks.
Ms. Burghardt, Mr. Kildberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for all the examples. It really helped me to see these structures and see the map and see all the different, the garages, the porches. I'd definitely be in favor of number two. I mean, it kind of ties in, we were talking, we obviously have fences that are not, that are nonconforming, and we allow people, we talked about, to do maintenance and keep those up. And I'd like to have an option for a homeowner to, or a property owner to ask for number three. I mean, like in this one at Bob's Ward, it seems like it would have been a great, you know, they're repairing a porch, they're going to increase the value of the house, it's going to make the neighborhood look better. We all love porches. I know we've given a lot of variances to porches in the first ward. So I would like that to be at least an option if the property owner could make the case for, and if on the city's side of things, we look at the right-of-way and say, "Yep, we can give that up safely to allow them to have the porch that they basically replicate the size of the porch that they've had for 50 years." And then on right-of-ways, I mean, a few of those buildings look like they're from, like, the 1850s. I mean, did the concept of the right-of-way even exist at the time that these were built? I mean, I see the one on Route 25. There's no way that Route 25 was like a four-lane state highway like it is. I mean, that one's like right on top of the street.
For whatever reason...
That street had to have changed, I would...
No, but for whatever reason, the original town of Geneva has very wide rights-of-way. And the original plats, I don't know what they were contemplating then, but it's the reason we can accommodate so much on-street parking is because we have these enormous rights-of-way.
Okay. So these weren't things that were globbed onto these properties after they were built? They were, these were, when we talk about a couple of these very old ones, the right-of-way existed before that property was built, actually.
Now, I don't know that a platte survey was required with every building permit, or that a building permit is required, but that could be why we're in some of these situations. Sorry?
So, yeah, I mean, I'm glad we're looking at this. I'm glad we understand a little bit of the scope of what we're looking at, and I'd like to see two and three accommodated in some way. Thank you.
Mr. Kocerog, sir. How are you doing tonight?
I'm good. Stacy here.
Mr. Kildberg. I couldn't read my own writing. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Mr. Kildberg, sorry.
I'd agree with Amy. It's hard to believe that these issues haven't surfaced at a closing. All these properties probably have traded hands multiple times over the years. If we've identified the majority of these, I think it's important that we notify the property owners, and then, as Alderman, Bruno outlined, provide a series of options or steps that would be taken if, in fact, the property owner wanted to do any. I don't anticipate that we're going to do anything unless there's some type of construction or something that's going to be happening with the affected property owner. But, you know, I think that, as he pointed out, I think that each situation is going to be somewhat unique, and the degree of the encroachment is going to vary, and its impact on the city is going to be dramatically different from case to case. So to come up with one hard and fast path that we would take to resolve an encroachment, I don't think was appropriate or is going to be all that effective. I think that, I think you've touched all the bases here in that this might be something that we notify those property owners of, and that these are going to be the options if, in fact, at any point in time, you plan to do anything to the property that would come into play here. So does that seem potentially reasonable?
Having the menu of options, certainly. I don't, I guess I hesitate to notify 35 properties if we haven't confirmed the encroachment. I think, I don't, you...
Okay. We're not capable of definitively confirming the encroachment.
The ones that we have, we have a handful that we've definitively confirmed, and the rest are kind of in question.
Okay. Maybe what we do is, we, either you are and we have confirmed, or we would assume or are suspicious of the fact that there might be an encroachment that comes into play. I think that a heads-up at this point in time, that way we've got a starting point and a path that we can move forward with. And I think as far as your department, it does give you some direction and some latitude as to resolving each of these based off of what you can work out with the property owner and what the city feels we might need to take a stand on, or where we may be more lenient, again, depending on the severity of the encroachment.
Mr. Maladra, Mr. Swanson?
So, as I think about it, I can't really think of a situation where we would not allow for option two, where we would not allow for ordinary maintenance and repair of your property. So perhaps we could revise our code to allow for that, and then in certain circumstances, depending on the situation, we could explore vacating or licensing agreements, depending on how much we depend on that right-of-way use. Does that make sense? So sort of as a blanket, say, change our code to allow for all of these existing possible encroachments to do regular maintenance and repair on their property. But then let people know that in some cases, we might consider vacating the right-of-way or not.
Yeah. I think the trigger, to me, becomes whether or not they're removing the entire encroachment. If they're removing the garage, and it cannot be accommodated on the private property, then three and four should be seriously considered. If it can be, or if it can be, but that creates all kinds of other issues, like lot coverage or setbacks.
Yeah.
Those are the kind of things we need to look at.
Got it.
Mr. Swanson, and then Mr. Kocerog?
Thank you, Mayor. It was brought up a couple of times that people should know that they have the encroachment. I just wanted to point out that there are a lot of properties that have been handed down in families over the years, and they may not have had this information available to them, so it is possible. I think, number one, I think my intent here was, yes, I agree, no one should have a surprise later on, and I think notification, if we could, would be great. However, I don't think if we can't confirm it, it doesn't make sense. But I think having the options available before these come up is utmost importance. So then, at least they're not surprised and say, "I can't rebuild this at all." That's a shock to me. At least we can say, "But you can, but here's what you have to do." So, number one, I think having the options determined and listed out and ready to go is number one. And then, number two, if we can fine-tune where these properties are, or how, if there are encroachments, great. If not, I understand as well. Thank you.
Mr. Kocerog? And Mr. Bruno?
Just curious, like, what's the impact of these encroachments, even potentially? Like, are we installing something like MetroNet, and now we don't have the access to the right-of-way that we wanted? Or the easement that we wanted? Or what? I mean, I know it's city property, and we've got to maintain that, and there's insurance liability maybe with that, but outside of that, what's the impact of the porch being a foot and a half into the easement?
Well, I mean, there's the liability for one, that the city assumes by having that encroachment in the public right-of-way. We have lawsuits filed over trips on a sidewalk. So if we can limit our liability, we should.
Okay.
I think, the rest will vary case by case. I mean, we have one house that looked like it was 15 feet into the right-of-way. That could have a real impact of putting a sidewalk through, or utilities, or other public improvements that are necessary. But other ones that are 13 inches or so may have no impact, other than the liability aspect.
So, I don't know. To me, it just, I guess I'm agreeing with Alderman, Swanson, and Maladra that certainly one doesn't make any sense to me. It's totally inflexible and unreasonable. They should definitely be able to maintain it for all of our aesthetic, and then having options for remedies that we can approve or disapprove as a council or administratively if it's minor, seems like the way to go, as far as I'm concerned.
Mr. Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing that's nagging me is, we look mostly in the older neighborhoods. If someone, I'm thinking of contemporary encroachments, like someone built something, you know, without a permit, I wouldn't want, you know, if they snuck in a garage that's two feet into, you know, like last year or something, I wouldn't want them to get a free pass. I don't know how that can be looked at, but...
I think we could establish that date based on our permit records. There is language in the code now that says, you know, provided a permit wasn't pulled. Well, we don't have permit records going back to 1924. We don't. So, but we could establish a date where we do have the records that go back this far and say, "This is for permitted work only."
Okay. That might thread the needle. Thanks.
Ms. Burghardt?
Thank you, Mayor. I know several of us have talked about people, you know, homeowners should know or should know about these encroachments. And I'm sure some of them do know, and I wonder if that's why some of those garages are in, you know, serious need of TLC. I know those garages pretty well, and I do wonder if people, you know, buy a house and know the garage is, you know, encroaching, that they think, "Well, as long as it stands, we're just going to leave that thing alone, you know, don't touch it." And I do wonder if we lay this out a little bit, that people, if they know they do have an avenue to perhaps replace it, you know, that they do any maintenance on it that requires a permit, that they're not going to be, you know, required to tear down that garage or tear off the part that's in the right-of-way. So I think it's a complex, there's probably a lot of different things going on when we talk about these encroachments, about knowledge, the knowledge of the property owner or not. So, thanks.
We're talking fences, right?
Yes, through lots, capacity, fences.
Oh, that's 18 now. We have consensus, I believe, that, I believe, item two seems to be the focal point of this special committee of the whole, with a subcategory of the remaining options, three and four, should certain circumstances occur. Does that seem fair?
Seems fair.
Yeah, whether, yeah.
Or we offer...
Right. It could be written in there, and it could be explained through administrative review and what have you, that here are your options, and...
We'll work with...
It's vacating option one.
No question about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no question about it.
We'll work with Public Works and our legal counsel and put a draft together.
If you had a structure that was in a state of disrepair, I mean, you could actually call a resident in and say, "This, I mean, you know, your garage is leaning." I've seen examples of garages in the city of Chicago that the city has exercised their right to say that this is a public hazard, and it needs to be torn down. I mean, I don't know if we'd ever get to that point in the city of Geneva, but wouldn't that be a better alternative than maybe some of the other options, just to say, "Hey, we've determined that this structure is on the public right-of-way, and you have two options." Or you have one option, and that would be its demolition. That would be upholding the city's code, wouldn't it?
I mean, we have provisions for hazardous buildings and structures now.
Right. I mean, I don't know. This might be, legally, this might be a better path or an easier path to pursue. I don't know. I'm just saying, I don't know if you necessarily want to rule out number one, because I could see where there'd be situations that it might be in the city's best interest to keep it in, because it would give you more leverage then as well. I mean, if you were to litigate a hazardous garage, I would think that this would be additional ammunition that you could use as well, that not only is it hazardous, it's also on the public right-of-way. I think if you went to court, that would carry some additional legal weight. Wouldn't it?
Agreed. Yeah, I mean, that's one of the major points of a hazardous building, is that it could fall into the public right-of-way.
Are we comfortable with the direction provided through my attempt to summarize? David, are you comfortable with that?
Good. Yes, sir.
Anything else? We've got 14 minutes. Any, anyone, oh, Ms. Burghardt. Of course, absolutely.
We thanked our, you know, we, all of us were talking about how great Swedish Days was, and I wanted to make sure we also thank our City of Geneva employees who do so much to make sure it's a success. Police, Public Works, Economic Development, Community Development, Fire. I'm sure I'm forgetting other people in administrative services. I know it's a lot of work, and, again, it takes a lot of people to make it happen, and so I wanted to make sure we notify our, notice our city employees as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. A motion to adjourn the special committee of the whole policy discussion meeting is in order? Motion by Mr. Marks. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
That's correct. Yeah, the next council meeting is July the 5th. July the 5th. That is, oof, which is a Tuesday. Good night, everyone.